We're rolling whenever you're ready, Commissioner.
I'm gonna give up on technology for a minute.
I could join some help.
Oh, I'll get going. This is slow. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to County Commission Meeting. Today is the eighth day of March 2021. Glad to see everybody here. Um, we're gonna start this morning with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Sergeant Cheating from the Sheriff's Office, followed by an invocation by Sheriff Carpenter.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our beloved Father in Heaven, as we hold ourselves before you at this time, we give you thanks for the opportunity of gathering together as a county commission and as citizens of Iron County. We're grateful for this beautiful land in which we live. We're grateful for our community members. We're grateful for all those who strive to make this the wonderful community that it is and to help one another and to be a blessing to one another's lives. At this time, Father, we pray that that will be with our county commission as they make decisions that will affect all of us in this county, that they will do so guided by thy Holy Spirit, to do those things which are in the best interest of the people of Iron County. We pray for those who are suffering at this time, who are in need, that their blessings will be fulfilled according to thy will. We ask that thy Spirit will abide with us now. We say these things humbly in the sacred name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. I'm gonna start with our minutes. Deep ones out. So these are the minutes. Uh, is this two sets or?
Just one.
One set. Okay.
Big set of minutes.
Okay. Uh, our minutes from February 8th, 2021 meeting. Is there any discussion? I'll sing none. I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Iron County Commission Meeting Minutes of February 8th, 2021.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I would like to mention, Commissioner Wood is not with us today for, for personal reasons. We look forward to having her back next go around, but she's not just AWOL. We, we know where she is. She's excused. There's those. Alright, let's move ahead to our department reports. We're gonna allow Sheriff Carpenter to go first so he can get to another assignment.
Thank you. Good morning. See if John can pull up the PowerPoint presentation here real quick. This past year has been an extremely busy year for law enforcement across the nation and, and here in Iron County as well. Just, uh, if you'll just go to the next slide, John. Under some of our current issues, after I prepared this report, uh, over the, over the weekend, we had a trailer fire out off of Land Highway, which totally consumed the gentleman's trailer. Unfortunately, it wasn't insured and so, you know, when we think about some of our county members that are, are struggling at this time, uh, you know, we may want to think of him and, and, uh, many other people in our county that are, are going through difficulties at this time and, uh, keep them in mind and look for ways that we might be able to reach out to them and help them. Uh, here a couple of weeks ago, Cedar City Police Department, uh, well, let me go back. It's probably about three weeks ago, Cedar City Police Department responded to a homicide-suicide on January 27th. And, uh, because of, uh, their CSI was out with COVID, we went ahead and sent our CSI, uh, Mikel, over to process that crime scene for them and, and to give them assistance there. Uh, I might just mention that in the last 12 months, we've had five homicides in Iron County. And of those five homicides, four of them have had a drug nexus. Uh, so, you know, when we look at what's going on across our nation, across our state, across our county, uh, and, and look at some of the, the drug reforms and different things that are taking place within our legislators and legislative meetings and whatnot, I think it's important to, to remember that drugs is not a non-violent, uh, crime. It's not a victimless crime. It's, uh, very much a victim-oriented crime. You know, we're seeing it not only in property crimes, but also in homicides. And, uh, we've certainly seen it here within our county this last year. On February 14th, uh, we responded, or Cedar City PD responded to an aggravated assault. A pursuit resulted in which our Iron County Sheriff's Deputy utilized a pit maneuver to stop the suspect vehicle after it rammed two other police vehicles. Uh, when the suspect attempted to run officer, attempted to run officers down with his vehicle, officers fired at the vehicle as our deputy used his vehicle to, uh, block the oncoming vehicle and prevent the loss of, of officers' lives. Uh, the officers and deputies then rendered medical aid to the suspect and assisted in his transport to the hospital. And the suspect is currently incarcerated in the Iron County Correctional Facility. Also, in this last quarter, Cedar City High School had a bomb threat and an active shooter threat the following day that, uh, the Sheriff's Office assisted Cedar City PD with. You know, we've resolved that as well. Uh, search and rescue had a search out in the Compton Wood Canyon that ended in, uh, the recovery of a gentleman that succumbed to, uh, the weather and, and passed away, uh, in that area. The next slide, our crime index. These are the crimes that we report to, uh, the FBI. So, uh, for Iron County Sheriff's Office, we've had one homicide, seven rapes, zero robberies, 14 assaults, which include aggravated assaults, 40 burglaries, 60 larcenies or thefts, 16 motor vehicle thefts for a total crime index of 138. Next slide. Uh, I talked a little bit about this on our last quarter. We've initiated a monthly leadership course in the Sheriff's Office to help develop our deputies and our administrative staff. Uh, since that time, we've had really a great reception on the parts of the deputies and staff members. You know, they've, uh, prepared some very, very good leadership courses and, and presented those. And, uh, it seems to be really, uh, meeting the bill there. We've also, uh, here, um, two fiscal years ago, the commission was kind enough to fund an awards program. We've finally got that up and running and we'll be having our first recognition dinner here towards the end of this month. Uh, and that's, that's been very well received. And, uh, you know, I think that, that the deputies really very much appreciate receiving a pat on the back for doing the good work that they do. We've also changed our training block, or our training from block training to incremental training. And I, I think that this is really significant because when we look at block training, that's the least effective type of training. Uh, you know, it's kind of like fire and forget. You know, you go to the train, training, you cram, 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 and then you leave and you forget everything that you learned. Uh, with incremental training, it's what it is, is taking everything that we need to do in training in small doses, but often repeatedly over and over. For Science, which is kind of the premier in, in law enforcement, uh, technology and whatnot, states that this is, is the best form of training. And, and so we've, we've adjusted our training to, to meet those incremental standards. And again, that seems to be very well received. Our current strength of patrol, uh, we currently have two new deputies that are in the FTO process. Uh, one is Tyler Snyder that came to us from South Salt Lake PD. Uh, Tyler, his family, had family down in St. George and wanted to be a little closer to their family. And so he left South Salt Lake to, to come here. We're grateful to have him. He brings with him a great deal of experience already and is already post-certified, so that's great. And also Mary Meeky, uh, came to us from Los Angeles Police Department. And again, same, uh, post-certified and, and, uh, a great deal of experience in a large metropolitan area. And, uh, just was very happy to come here to, uh, a little bit more enjoyable pace of life. So we welcome both of them. We also have two new hires that are currently in the law enforcement block of post. Uh, Gary Orton was our part-time, uh, crime scene investigator and search and rescue commander. And, uh, he had self-sponsored for the first part of, uh, of post down at Dixie. And we hired him, uh, as a full-time deputy and have sent him up to Salt Lake to finish the law enforcement, uh, portion of post. And then, uh, Marshawn Sweeney is, uh, self-sponsored through Dixie. Uh, currently lives down in St. George, but is excited to come up here and join us. So since he finishes, uh, his post-training in Dixie, then he'll be joining us here. And we have, uh, one pending, uh, Skyler Davis has served as a volunteer for our search and rescue. And just kind of a side note about Skyler is every, every single time that we've ever had a search and rescue, he has always been there and has been one of our, our workhorses with, uh, search and rescue. Has a great work ethic and we're excited to hire him as a, as a full-time deputy. Uh, he actually has started with the Sheriff's Office today and will be, uh, attending post starting on Monday. Just under future ops and, and concerns, uh, vehicles, you know, we, we very much appreciate everything the commission has done over the past couple of years to help us bring our, our vehicles up to where they need to be. We're, we're getting pretty close to where they need to be. Uh, so we're, we're looking forward to being able to make some more vehicle purchases this year under, uh, Dan Jensen's, uh, Jessen's brilliant, uh, ops plan. And we're, we're looking forward to that. I think that that's really going to be a blessing for the county as a whole, especially for the Sheriff's Office to be able to keep our vehicles up where they really need to be. And then, uh, the jail, we visited, uh, Kane, Cash and Beaver County jail facilities. And we're going to be going down to Washington County, down to Purgatory on Wednesday, uh, to visit their jail. Uh, I'd like to be able to set up another committee meeting here in the near future. And so I'll be sending out a email, uh, to see if we can find a date for the jail committee to, to look at that. And that's really pretty much all I have. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those at this time.
I don't know if you saw my email. I'm gonna, I've got a five-county meeting Wednesday, so I'd like to join you, but I won't be able to.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
With that, I'll excuse myself as I have another meeting here. So thank you.
Alright. Uh, Dan Jessen, our county auditor. Come on down.
Howdy, Commissioners.
Morning.
So, it's audit season. We're in full swing. On that subject, we got just short of a finding. We kind of got a reprimand from the audit, auditors last time for not approving checks in this meeting. And, um, we talked about maybe tweaking the agenda so that it has it on there. And John pointed out, well, it is on there right after approved minutes and before departmental reports. It says approve warrants, but we're not actively doing that. And, um, I pointed that out to him last time. Well, we kind of do this. And they're like, well, are they actually saying that we review the minutes and, you know, making a motion to accept them or something? Not the minutes, but the?
Warrant.
The, the warrants, checks that we've, we've done. And, um, I just, I just wanna, this isn't, wasn't on my thing to talk about today, but I got thinking about it while we were, while we were talking about it. What do you want to do? Do you wanna, you wanna add a, a separate line item so it reminds us? Do you want me to print off a report of everything? Cause August sends those to you guys by email?
Right.
And I know you, but, but the, the auditors, like, they really need to be approving them in the commission meeting in front of the public. So I don't know how to, I don't know how to best do it, but we're not, what we're doing isn't working.
I think the easiest way, I, I think it, it would be helpful to add another line because even though we've talked about this a dozen times.
Right.
I forget.
I know. I mean.
So if we can, but, but I know, I think we're all pretty diligent in reviewing those and, and sending them back to August. If it would be sufficient, I think we should just add that as a, as a line to make it public that we've done that. I don't know that, I, I don't know that we need to take the time to review all of those in a public setting.
Yeah.
But, man, if.
Well, even in.
That jives with the requirement.
Even in an environment like at Enix City, when I was there, like literally the, the county, the, the council, city council, they never see the bills until the meeting. I would circle them all around and they would be signing them and passing paper everywhere. It was a mess. And then they would approve them. And that's how they did it. Um, you guys have the time to see them, go through them, but I think we just need to acknowledge it in the public. So.
And that's what we did in Cedar City. We would, we would talk about specific bills, ask questions, bring it up, and then, and vote to approve the bills that were paid. So I think, and it might even be good to put them in the packet with, with, that you send to us just to remind us.
Okay.
Again, if it's, I don't know what you think, Commissioner.
Do that.
If you would like, we could include them in the, the weekly, the, the.
I could have August add it.
How many pages? Would it be like hundreds?
No, not hundreds. I mean, each one that goes out may be anywhere from two to three pages to 10 to 11 pages. And, and there's at least one a week. Sometimes there's two. So, I mean, these are.
I will say that sometimes our, and it's not a big deal.
Okay, gets bigger.
We can make it very large, but our, our commission packets will sometimes get unruly anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you want, you could, I mean, I don't really have a preference, but you could do a.
You do a hyperlink to.
Yeah. Yeah, you could do that. You could do a, a, a paper packet. Are you talking about ex post facto? Are we gonna, are they gonna review them before you?
No. We're not gonna re, we're, we're still, once, once we send them out.
Uh-huh.
And, and they, they're coming in and, and seeing them and signing stuff in my office. Does she have you sign those? I think yours.
If we don't, if we haven't sent.
If you haven't sent an email.
An attached email back.
And you sign them when you come in.
Then we sign them.
So that's officially when that happens. And, and we generally are getting those cut. And that's when the approval, but they do want us to prove that in a public setting. So.
So what I'm asking is, would it be a ratification situation? Or would, yeah, it sounds like you're.
Let's, at minimum, let's add a line so that we remember to say it and maybe make a motion that we approve the minutes. And then we make a motion that we approve the, the warrants, checks. I wonder if we can get rid of that, if we can update that language so the public knows what we're talking about.
Let me know what language you'd like.
And then if there's any, um, if there's any question or if the public says, hey, I want to see what you guys just approved or something, then we could run in and bring it in, review it.
They gotta be good. Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Well, that wasn't even on my list, so I'll hurry, cause I got a few things to talk about.
And I'm sorry I'm killing this horse, but, so you're, you're talking about stuff that they will have already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. We sent them a thing and it shows literally every check. Line item came out of the description and the amount. So, and its pages. So I hate to pick a scab, but I'm wondering, I just wanted to clarify. So last week, we, um, the commission made the, took the action to move CJC under the attorney's office. Then there were some meetings last week, and then you were gonna reach out to Marilyn and kind of fine tune it. What I need to know is for, for the purposes of, um, payroll authorization and like requisitions and stuff, what was the final, cause I, if, if you put somebody as a supervisor and then that, that supervisor normally would do those things, then that's the way my office is gonna proceed. But, but it sounds like talking to Mike, that maybe you guys had talked about something else. Now I talked to Chad after you and I talked and Chad was like, I'm not sure that that's what we agreed on. And so I was like, well, Mike is gonna talk to Marilyn. And so anyways, I'm just hoping you guys could clarify for this upcoming payroll and stuff.
But Marilyn hasn't felt like talking. And so we haven't, we, we really haven't talked about it. We said we'll address it when you feel up to it.
So do you want to talk with her and then get back?
I think that's the best.
And in the meantime? Cause that's, I was like, after I got talking to you, I was like, well, the action they took in the meeting, if, if he's her supervisor, then I really need that, that signature unless they undo it. So I didn't know if you were, and I didn't see it on the agenda. And I'd like, I'm gonna pick this scab I got, I got to. So.
Well, and.
Thank you. So talk to Marilyn.
Talk to Marilyn. It, it, it sounds like, I mean, if it moved forward that way, I think that's what we were trying to accomplish.
Okay.
And so.
Right. Well, and, and, and the intent of that was never to have Chad's office micromanage her or her budget or any of those things anyways. In fact, this is a larger discussion that I think we need to have. Um, we have a, an internal control problem in the county in that all of the department heads, the non-elected department heads currently have the ability to, they're the only one that signs their own time sheet, which is, which is not a good, from a fraud perspective, that's bad. The other reason, the other thing that they do that is bad is they sign their own reimbursements. If, so if they're getting reimbursed for expenses, um, let's say they go to a training, right? And I don't want to name somebody because I don't want it to seem like I, you know, but let's say somebody says, yeah, I went to a training and I need to reimburse myself $400 because mileage and meals and all that stuff. Um, and they sign it as the recipient and they sign it as the supervisor. There's no double check on that. My office gets that and it's technically fully authorized. Whether they went on that training or not, you know, I, in, in other words, it's an internal control problem that we don't have anybody counter-signing payments to themselves and, um, and time sheets and stuff. The problem is, is our elected, I mean, our appointed heads of department, their only bosses are the commissioners. And we haven't had the part-time commissioners really doing that role, but we ought to, we ought to. We either ought to have you guys signing their time sheets and at least reimbursements to themselves, or we ought to give it to another elected official. Back in the day, the clerk used to sign some of those and, um, or another elected official did. You know, if we had a county executive, then they would fill that role to, you know, a mayor or a county executive would, would do all of that. But until that, that really should be on you. And this kind of pointed out that issue that we really are kind of, we're not really covered from an internal controlled perspective. I'm sure if that question ever were to come up in an audit, they would say, wait a minute, you don't have somebody else reviewing this and signing that? Like, well, they're, they're department head. Anyways, so something to think about is all I'm getting at. We, we probably ought to look at that. And I don't, I, I certainly don't want to focus on the CJC because we have the same issue throughout the county. You know, landfill, roads, IT, um, on and on and on. So, any thoughts there? Okay. So you're gonna get with Marilyn. We'll proceed with Chad as her supervisor for those things unless you tell me otherwise.
You know, I, I would suggest maybe that, I mean, that this is a good administrative discussion. And maybe it ought to be had with, uh, HR as well.
Sure.
Kind of, kind of give some thought to how that might best be structured in the county.
Yeah. If I was to audit the county, I would say this, I would, I would give us a finding to say you have a, you have an issue here.
You're lacking internal control.
You're, you're lacking internal controls. Yep.
So you're saying we should, oh, the departments were over, we should be approving those things?
I think so, yeah. Or somebody should. And, and it makes sense.
Instead of the department head, like, like Rhodes, for instance, or the county engineer, which I'm over now, um, rather than that department head approving it, we should.
Well, and, and, and for example, so engineer, no, no, he doesn't have a lot of employees, Rhodes. Any reimbursements to any of those employees or their time cards are all signed by Preston. But reimbursements to Preston and Preston's own time sheets are signed by Preston, both as the employee and as the supervisor.
Not talking, he, he, he does his employees, but then we should do that department head?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. So there's, that takes away a, an, an opportunity for fraud. It, it, so it's a, it's a weak internal control is what I'm saying.
I think we ought to have a meet, a sit-down.
Yeah, I think the best thing to do is work that out.
And, and send out a memo to everybody saying this is how we're gonna, so nobody thinks we're picking on any one person.
Well, and I think this naturally evolved. You, you used to not have a lot of department heads that weren't elected. And there were a few, and they were all under one particular elected official, whether it was a commissioner or somebody else. And then we had a county executive, which that would have fallen to. And then we dissolved that county elected executive position, which fell back to you guys. We just never had you guys resume that role. And so they ended up at that point just approving their own.
I think that's a good idea.
So anyways, um, okay, real quick, I know I'm taking a lot of time. This is why, this is why, uh, the others hated to be on the list with me. Um, real quick, legislature, um, there were some bills, uh, I gotta tell you, man, it's stressful. We talk about that a lot. This year, they, they were jacked up on steroids. But having said that, the way it all flushed out, I generally kind of pleased. There was some scary bills that didn't pass. One of them was Senate Bill 52, which was a property tax deferral modifications. This was a nightmare for the treasurers. And it was a big budgetary problem for, for, for us and for everybody. Would have allowed a, a person to defer their property tax until they die, um, which would have done, did a bit of big tax shift to basically your younger families, which are already struggling and already have home affordability problems and stuff like that. Um, it's probably gonna come back next year. Um, the, the original plan was let anybody defer if they're over, I can't remember 50, till they die, which means their, their taxes just keep stacking up for 30, 40 years. And then when they die, everything comes due. Um, nightmare for the treasures to track. It would be a tax shift to everybody else. So then it got weed, you know, whittled down, whittled down, whittled down to basically another form of an abatement. And we're like, if, if you really want to help a certain class of people, you know, let's look at the abatements. By the way, Senate Bill 26, which the auditors have been working with Senator Davis for some time to tweak the abatements, um, for these exact same people that Senate Bill 52 was supposed to be helping, that bill finally passed, um, at the, in the 11th hour. And that does expand the abatements for certain people. Um, and that was, that was a good bill. Um, Senate Bill 52 failed, but it'll probably come back. Uh, Senate Bill 201, public notice amendments. Anybody who has to do public notices, John has to do a lot. This Senate, this bill affected 6,000 lines of code. And in general, for most public notices, this allows us, instead of having to put it in a paper. public notices, this allows us, instead of having to put it in a paper, instead, we can put it on our own website. Put it on the public notice website, so this is a really good bill. A, a bill like this has been fought for a long time because it's kind of a death nail for, you know, one more death nail for the newspapers. That are, they're frankly shriveling on the vine and this is gonna take away revenue, but, you know, when we have to go through a process that costs us all this extra time and money to put it in a paper that nobody reads, I hate to say that, but really, it's, it's, that's why they're dying, right? Is a lot of time and expense, and so yes, this has been one of those things that's kind of been artificially propping up newspapers. This doesn't get rid of public notices on newspapers for everything, for example, we'll still have to do budget, truth and taxation. There's some things that John is still gonna have to do, but it takes it away for a ton of things. So, we need to go through and figure out what things we don't need to do, we also need to work with our new web administrator to figure out a good process and a good usable thing for the public so that we can put public notices on our website and it's right there where people can see it. I'm really excited about this, the tax sale, I think we still have to notice in the newspaper, but.
Do we have a, do we have a county Facebook page?
Yeah.
Is it, do we use it much?
No.
Cause more people are gonna see it there than anywhere.
Yeah.
It's. Wha- what I've noticed is, people do see that, but I think when we have really important things, if there's like a, like a fire notification or something that has, has gone out, we'll often ask people to share it on their individual Facebook pages. The county Facebook page doesn't have a lot of followers because we, we put controls on it and it, therefore, it gets posts infrequently. So, it doesn't have.
I just know Cedar City started using theirs more and it, and it, people saw it, I mean, they're on there and it's another option.
So, concerning bill that passed, concerning to me anyways, Senate Bill sixty-five, community reinvestment agency amendments. This gives reinvestment agencies. So, the county has an agency, Bryanhead has an agency, Cedar City has an agency, ENIC has an agency, which isn't active, they don't have any projects. The ability to levy a tax, they can now levy a property tax. The reason that's concerning is there are some of these agencies that their board is made up of non-elected officials. And they can now levy a property tax, I gotta, I, I didn't think this thing had a chance of flying on constitutionality issues, but it went through. So, um, it could happen, um, which is, again, it's an auditor bill because that's one more agency that we have to calculate a tax rate, we have to go through truth and taxation process, we have to, the treasurer's gonna have to send them money if they do pass a tax and so forth. So, anyways, that passed, who knows whether, if we'll have any entities in Iron County that decide to levy a property tax, but it's possible now. Um, House Bill four sixteen, this is my baby, I was really excited about this. This tweaked the language of the local tax sale process so that we can do it online. It was kind of vague whether we could or we couldn't, we did it last year and a bunch of counties are gonna do it this year, including us. Um, and now it's explicitly legal, so that was a good one. House Bill one twenty-eight, local accumulated fund balance amendment, this affects the county because now we can keep up to sixty-five percent of an annual year's general fund revenues in an unassigned fund balance. So, this actually increased the ceiling on the fund balance that we're able to carry from year to year. Um, as you know, counties can't have a rainy day fund, the, the state does, that's the lowest level of government where you can have a rainy day fund, we can't. So, this allows us to keep a little bit more fund balance on our, on our books if we need to. Also affected cities and special service districts and towns and the whole deal. Property tax relief amendments, Senate Bill twenty-six, I already talked about, that passed and that was a good, that was a good bill we were working on. So, moving on, um, I wanna make you aware and also, um, I'm gonna have some requests from you, Christine will be retiring. She's announced her retirement, which will be July first, uh, she's my chief deputy. Um, Christine's been in the county auditor's office for a long time. And we're, we're sad, um, it's gonna be, we're gonna lose a lot of, um, of knowledge and, and skill. There's a lot of things that Christine does that, uh, she carries a big load. So, on one hand, I'm gonna ask for a little bit of a one-time budget adjustment because I would like to overlap somebody. There's a lot of things that Christine does that nobody else knows or touches, um, tax sale, abatements. She is the one that single-handedly does the grant stuff in, 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 in the auditor side. Outstanding checks, there's just all these processes that Christine does, so to overlap plus pay out her vacation, I'm gonna, gonna have a budget problem. So, I'll look to do a budget adjustment, um, that's a one-time thing, but beyond that, um, I would like to have a discussion. This is a good opportunity, um, when, when I have a major player leaving to rearrange the office and what it does, it also gives me an opportunity, what I would like to do is, I would like to overhaul our grant process, we've talked about bringing in a grant person um, that specializes in grants and writing grants, I don't wanna bring in a new person just for that, but what I, I do want to overhaul the grant process and involve some project management software that we do have the ability to use within code. And I really wanna have a single point to, from the very beginning of the grant, the infancy process. When a, when a department head says, hey, I wanna apply for this grant, they can come and they can sit down, we can talk through the timelines, we can get it, we can get a good uh, idea of what the grant will entail, sometimes they'll come in and they'll, they'll just report to you guys and say, I wanna do this grant. And we don't even know what the impact is gonna be. Um, is it, is it, is it a match, is there match dollars, sometimes it's cash match, sometimes it's not, is this a grant that we have to spend the money and get reimbursed? Or we get the money upfront and we gotta spend it however we want? These grants, you know, some of these grants, it's a seven thousand dollar grant and it takes a ton of hours in both the department head and in my office to do it, I mean, these grants, it's not free money, right? Anyways, my point is, is I would like to have somebody from start to finish that can review that with them, can come up with an actual picture of what it's gonna mean for the county, so we know the cash flow, how it's gonna go through. Um, they can come in, they can, they can recommend the grant to you, we can give you an, an actual idea of what it's gonna look like for the county. And then, if it's approved, that person can create the GL lines and then can track it on the backend. Right now, we have all these moving pieces and sometimes the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing, and at the end of the day, it all comes crashing down on me in budget time or during audit time. Um, for example, there was a grant that was approved in October and started in October that my office knew nothing about. And they started spending money in twenty twenty, we never budgeted a dime for it, and we have an invoice that started back in October. An engineering invoice and, um, it's gonna probably get us into a little bit of a hot water situation with our audit. And, and I knew nothing about it until about the middle of January, end of January. And, so we have to then go retroactively and create the accounts and we're, anyways, it's a kind of a mess. I think everybody will tell you our grant process can be improved, right? Anyways, internal audit, I would really like to have an internal audit function, we need to. We, we are getting dinged for not doing internal audit. Um, I do have some things I can work with, but I, I'm really looking to sit down with especially my, my liaison, Paul. But if any of the commissioners, I have a little bit of a roadmap, how I'd like to shift things around in my office, I'd like to bring in a part-time person. But I think I can mostly pay for that person with the savings I'm gonna be able to get from overtime and for some other things. But, but it, the way I wanna do it, I'm probably gonna need a little bit of extra budget. I'm gonna, I would like to bring in a part-time person to take about half of accounts payable, all of the recurring stuff, the stuff that I can train somebody in a week to do. And then shift half of August duties to do grant writing and, and all this stuff, and then take the new person that's gonna replace Christine. I would like to bring somebody in with an accounting degree, and then I can actually have them do some internal audit, I can actually have them do, um, end of year stuff, general ledger stuff and, um, financial prep stuff. So, this is a kind of a major overhaul of my department and I'd like to sit down and talk with you guys, I think I can do it for not a lot of money, but, but it will require some, some work with the commission, so, okay. Sorry, I'm almost done. Last thing, um, we're gonna start meeting, um, my goal was to meet this week and then I just got a load dumped on me from the auditors, so it'll probably have to push it to next week. Like to start sitting down with the department heads to talk about a vehicle needs announce, um, assessment with the new fleet plan. And actually, so we know down to brass tacks, what vehicles we're talking for department. And I'd like to start those meetings, again, my, my target for the calendar year was to do it this week and probably gonna have to punt it till next week with all of the, the, the list of stuff I got from the auditors on Friday, so. Anyways, that's my time, that's more than my time, any questions for me?
Sounds good, just let us know when you wanna meet.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, um, with the transfer of email, um, several of my folders were lost and so I don't have a budget update, um, uh, it was lost in the transfer. Um, but I do, we will probably be coming to Dan to ask for, um, a budget amendment based on, um, I, I did have to let go of one of my employees, um, and those duties have been transferred to, um, various places, including the fulfillment of our, of our travel packets, we've had to actually move that to SUU and we're having their mail services actually do that for us. Um, so I'm hoping that we can, um, transfer some of those funds that, for that employee to, um, my postage. And so that we can get that covered, um, and in the meantime, until we actually hire for that position. Uh, which won't be until June. When we were in the budget process, I was going to eliminate a software program that helps us, uh, track short-term rentals. Um, but, as I started looking into what was happening with short-term rentals, I actually ended up deciding I needed to actually keep that, um, software program for at least another year, so that we can have a, you know, a good picture of what's going on. I'll give you an exam, so below on your report, it shows you what the short-term rentals are in Iron County at this current moment. So, I ran the report yes, um, on Friday, and so right now, we have two thousand two hundred and thirty-one. The last time I ran the report, we had eight hundred and thirty-four. So, in the, in the process of COVID and people bought, um, purchasing a lot of property, particularly in the Bryanhead area. Um, we've seen kind of a, this big shift in short-term rentals, and so we'd really like to kind of track that, at least for this year. Um, to kind of see what's going on with that, that's more than what we actually have in lodging. Actual like hotel and bed and breakfast rooms, so that's a pretty big impact. Did you have a question?
I do have a question on that, um, so did we determine that, that Airbnb and VRBO collect the TRT? And remit it to the appropriate agencies?
They, they remit it to the appropriate agencies, the only issue is, is they do not disclose who they collected it from. And so it comes in as a payment from VRBO or from Airbnb. And so we have no idea who that, who is the owners, and so that's why we, I like having this software program is so that we can, at least we have an idea of who they are, who's out there and where they're located and possibly where it could be impacting, um, communities. We do send this report to each community for their use, um, so they can, you know, if they have something, like Bryanhead has, um, you know, they have some rules and regulations in regards to short-term rentals. And so it's just another tool for them in order to, to track.
So, if you've seen them go up this much, then we should, you've seen the revenues come up quite a bit too.
Yeah, we're actually seeing revenues coming in, so, so it's good to, it's been good that way, so. Um, so we ended twenty twenty, uh, in terms of our revenues, uh, restaurant tax was up seven percent and TRT was just slightly up, we, it was about eight thousand dollars more than twenty nineteen, so, uh, we're, we're thrilled, to be honest with you, cause we anticipated a forty percent drop and then, you know, summer hit and Iron County became the, the tournament central, and so, um, so we were thrilled to, to end the year as, as we did. Average daily rate did, however, was down about three point four percent. So, these hotels, um, are charging less, um, than they were the year prior.
So, we really dodged a bullet, I mean, we, considering COVID and everything, we did well.
We did well, and when you compare us to our counterparts, we did, we did well. A lot, you know, other counties were making, they were making it up, but they are still down. Uh, but our dear friends in Garfield County are definitely down, and that's mostly because they rely so much on international tourism. And international tourists do spend more and they spend longer, you know, spend longer time in the area. Um, whereas, uh, the domestic, uh, they tend to spend less and spend less time, so. So, it'll be interesting to see what happens as, you know, borders open up and, you know, what happens that way. But, I mean, a certain percentage of our visitors do come from the international market, just because of our location, so. Um, but again, we were very, very fortunate.
They don't go to Zion, they don't go to Bryce, right? Kind of, so that, that's where Garfield's hurting, right, is they just don't get that overflow.
They don't get that overflow and they don't get the, that Bryce visitor, so. And when you rely on a, a visitor that spends more money and spends more time, and then you replace it with somebody that spends less time and less money, which is, you know, people from Utah or from the surrounding states. Yeah, it's still gonna have a pretty big impact, so. Grants, we're just moving along on grants, I know I make, I make, um, Dan's office crazy with grants, but it's a significant amount of money, so well over about five hundred thousand dollars in grants come through our office. So, yeah, I would support any way we can make that easier for all of us. Um, we're definitely busy, um, you'll see a report on our media, we have had some really good uh, media hits, and, you know, from, uh, Thrillist, um, to Outside Online and basically, it's generated, just in the last three months, that's generated a little over three hundred thousand dollars in ad value. So, that's money I don't have to spend in terms to get awareness of our area, that's just, um, that's just good, good PR. Uh, our travel advisory board met, um, to, uh, allocate funds to events and projects within the county. Um, the total was a hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and sixty, um, the list is there, we had lots of, you know, we had a lot of returning events, which is great, we're, we're excited to see that they wanna, you know, keep moving forward. Um, it doesn't look like we had any event that really went out of business, um, during the COVID year. Uh, baseball tournaments and softball tournaments are returning again, in fact, they're turning in, in more. Um, every single weekend, starting, uh, April twenty-fifth through mid-acto- mid-October, except for the holidays, which is July fourth, twenty-fourth and Memorial Day. Um, we are gonna have a, we're gonna have a tournament in Iron County. Brian Horred Resort, uh, has reported that they are at a hundred and ninety-five thousand plus skier days to date. Uh, they still have five more weeks left to go, and so we, and they're anticipating that they'll end the season at two hundred and fifty thousand skier days, which is a record, is record-breaking, this is something we anticipated because, um, the skiers were definitely telling us that they wanted to come back um, after COVID, and, and, and they have. Uh, several resorts were closed down for a while in the neighboring states, um, because of their COVID restrictions. So, Bryanhead and Utah was able to see some good things, um, despite the fact we've had very little snow. So, it's gonna be, it's been interesting, it's been good.
Have you, on the, uh, the short-term rentals? I mean, Bryanhead has more than the county combined, and that seems to be a new phenomenon, is that correct?
Yeah, so Bryanhead's always had the majority of the short-term rentals anyways, so, but what has happened is every condo that's gone up for sale has been purchased and has gone straight into a short-term rental program.
See, I didn't realize there were fourteen hundred structures up there, but that, that includes.
Well, there's fourteen hundred, there's that many units, I guess, so. Now, there's probably some duplication in there and we'll need to run that report to, to eliminate the duplication, but every indication, at least from the real estate people, is that everything has been purchased. It does not sit on the market very long, um, and it's going straight into that pool.
And Paul kinda asked this, but, so in terms of revenue from your office, have you been able to discern, discern any, like, like, has that been a great, good bit of growth in just Bryanhead particularly, or?
Yeah, we've seen, we've definitely seen some growth in the Bryanhead area. And that's, cause we find that interesting because a hotel was shut down for all of summer.
Yeah.
You know, their largest, one of their largest, well, they have two hotels and one was shut down during the summer. You know, their largest, one of their largest, well, they have two hotels and one was shut down during the summertime. And yet their revenues were just really high. So we knew that, just looking at that, that short-term rentals was the reason why.
That's remarkable.
Uh, any other questions regarding tourism? So here's.
Thank you.
Okay. Just a, a thank you again for providing a building for Bryce over at the road department that has been very good for us this winter. He's been able to accomplish quite a few projects because he has, you know, access to a bay in which he can, he's been able to build some structures for the shooting range and just keep some things up in, in terms of the maintenance. I will be coming to you in the short term in regards to the shooting range and having events out there. We're coming into the requests for more opportunities to do some events in particular ranges of the, of the shooting range, like the long range. The problem is, is the way the range is set up, it's very difficult for us to manage a shooting event without closing the entire range, which when we do that for an event, costs about $500. That's our fee. Which is not necessarily something that, you know, somebody who's putting on a small shooting event can afford. And so it's kind of, it's kind of eliminating some opportunities to have events at the shooting range. However, we have to keep it safe. So. So I'm, I'm going to work on seeing how we can possibly do that. And the best way is to open the range in terms of the pistol bays for the public and then just close off the long and the, the long range and the rifle range. And maybe possibly charge a lesser fee so that we can have those events out there. So, but we do have, it is an issue, it's, it's starting to become something of an issue. And so I, I'll, I'll be bringing that to you.
You close the long range while the, when you have pistol events, even though they're, they have the berms around them?
Um, I close the whole entire range. I have to. Because the way the long range is constructed, including the rifle range, even with those berms, the, the bullets can fly over.
They can go over them.
They can go over. So I think if we do anything at all, we have to just say the public could go down to the pistol ranges and then we can manage it that way. But even that, I mean, it's just, there's just some things that we've got to work out in order to keep people safe. But when we close the range, we have a very angry public who wants access because they've driven that long way to go and practice. And so it's, it's not fun. So. But there are, but with the fact that there are more and more people who want to use the range in terms of events and classes and things like that, I think we need to have some, a better structure. So, so I'll be, I hope to bring that to you probably within the next three months. We do have many events already scheduled for the parks. There's a list right there. We Rock is returning. We're excited about that. And then that's has spurred another rock crawling event that will happen in August. And then we also have an OHV race that has come to our, who has come to us indicating they want to do a race out in, in Three Peaks. And they're looking at a September date. So. We're excited. The high school mountain bike races are returning. We'll have one in September again and we'll also have one in October. And we're still vying for the, for their state championship in early November. So. Camping and special events and reservations, we ended 2020 at 12,520, about $2,400 more than we did the year prior. That's definitely a reflection of COVID and people wanting to get outside and utilizing more of the outdoor recreation spaces. Woods Ranch has been busy. Our, we had a busy Christmas and we actually had injuries reported during the Christmas holiday. At the sledding hill, we had two, two back injuries in which ambulance was called and they did use our emergency phone to call the ambulance. The ice shrink, so far the upkeep has been fairly good. We did notice this last couple of weeks, it's been a little hard for them to do the maintenance because of the temperatures. The ice has definitely been melting and they haven't been able to really do anything during the month of February. So. That is something we'll want to kind of talk about when we look at this project going forward. Because I'm not sure that it's going to keep the ice as long as they would like to make it worth it, or worth their while. But, but yeah, so far it seems like it's been okay. So. And we're sorry to hear about Carrie and her struggles. So. So I'm sure some of that's, you know, they're dealing with their, what's going on in their families. So. I'll be ordering the vault pole at Four Woods Ranch and it will be in place sometime in June.
What will we do with the old?
We actually just tear it down.
Just, okay, just.
Yeah. So. It's not something we can move, which is unfortunate. Like the vault pole that I am ordering, you could move that to another location if you ever needed to. That's just how good they're constructed. So. And we will be hiring our seasonal employee. This employee will be, will be shared with Mike Wurden a couple of days, a day a week. So that that person can go out and do some trail maintenance on the OHV trails and then also be there for us. If we can work towards getting that person a new truck, not a new truck, but a truck. The truck we do have is limping along. We've done everything we can to make it work, but it would, it'd be better if we had another truck to help us with that. Any questions regarding Parks and Rec?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sergeant Cheney, you here for corrections, I assume?
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir.
Just here today filling in for Lieutenant Shaver. Couldn't be here today. As you look at the sheet there, it says we're 16% of our budget the current year. The revenue received as reflects mostly January there, the 111,688. We've had a little bit of unexpected expenses that have been COVID-related, you know, more gloves, PPE gear and so forth. Our cost on culinary meals gone up a little bit and that was due to COVID as well. We're currently sitting at $1.12 a meal. Our, our budget so far was about a little over 28,000 between non-food items and food costs. Our bookings have been down a little bit. That's due to the current inmates that we accept into jail right now. We currently quarantine our inmates for 10 days in a separate housing section before we can finish their current classification and move them to the appropriate location. Population's been running around 130. And as you can see from there, they got the breakdown between state, federal and county. We had a few notes here about vacancies. So we filled the interim positions. Those were completed. We're not currently asking to fill the interim deputy position to replace it all the way from the top where Hanson has been out on the extended military assignment. Until we get the work crew active and going again. We, we've been struggling in that area a little bit because we don't have any inmates that really qualify to go out in our community. Due to the level of classification inmates that we have that have to, to stay inside. Hope, we're hoping to get that going. There's a breakdown just above that, those notes there. It shows the, the man-hours that have gone in for the work crew during this last quarter though. Uh, looks like we have our long-term leave, we got some, some people that have been out that have affected, you know, our, our workforce there a little bit. With some of the military assignments that have been called out to DC and then long-term for Sergeant Hanson. Had some FMLA cases as well. And then also the, those that have gotten some COVID and had to go out on some leave. Down there at the bottom, one thing is, I guess was a, was a kind of a bigger subject that's been going on is the sewer. I guess we're looking at putting in a grinder down there at the, at the street or something like that. That's what I've been told. And, and that should alleviate some of those issues. It's an inline sewer grinder. It makes, it looks like there's going to be some changes to the medical department, knocking out some walls, making some more space for the, hopefully the nurse that they were able to, will be able to hire. We're doing interviews on the 11th of March for that. We did, we still do have a medical tech open position since the 14th of August. We had a couple of applicants wanted, wanted to turn us down because they weren't able to find affordable housing is what they said. And then also we had two that didn't pass background checks. So we're back in that boat again. We have two people that were hired, three total in the academy right now, Torek Willis and Wadley. So I guess you guys have been going around and touring some jails, getting some ideas about jails and stuff. So that's, that's good. Our jail's a pretty sturdy jail, but it's, you know, it's met its years over the time. So. Like I said, we got the three in the academy. They're going to be done here in a few weeks. So it's going to be good. We're going to get them online going and, and they're really good people. So we decided to be working with them. I've got, two of them are going to be going to Sergeant Philings Crew and then I got Torek coming to my crew. So. Good people. Looking forward to working with them. Any questions you have about any of those breakdowns on those sheets there?
So on the grinder, is that, is that something we're installing? Cedar City's installing?
You know, I'm not 100% on that one, but.
That one, that's been a mess. I can, we can talk offline. It's.
Could resolve issues, I know, those things.
It, it go, it, it goes back to the sewage sewer line issues that the city had down, down the line. So.
Yeah, inmates tend to flush undesirable things. So. Take care of those things too.
Yeah, we've had.
That should prevent that.
Several meetings and I'm going to throw Mike under the bus over there, Edwards. He's been involved with that discussion as well. So he may have some input.
And the J-block door, I guess Supervisor Mike Gibbs has got that all lined up. How he's planning that out with the door and the, and the walls. And the same with the medical. That'll leave office space for that new nurse and, and the medical department will have more room to work. So we're just, we're working things out. Things are rolling right along.
Excellent.
All right. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cousins?
Got a few things to report on. I met with Chad Carter last week on the senior center. They're getting close to finishing that project this week. They should get a lot of that done. The elevator getting close to, was installed and which was nice around that and sheetrock and do some touch-up. Some painting items, there's some excavation in the back, but it's come along really good. They're really excited. You know, for starting in September, really pleased with, with how that came together and how was able to pull that off and get it done. This last week, we met our new county engineer and I, along with UDOT representative Craig Lob and, and Richard, well, Richard Wilson, our engineer and Scott Stubbs met over here in Parowan to discuss some different recharge projects that the county would be more than happy to work with them on as, in, in regards to some help with our excavator and different things. They're planning that out. It's going to be a long-term thing. They need to find some money. I suggest they go to legislature and, and seek some funding, which is what, what the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District has done. And it's been successful and they've been good to fund some of those recharge projects. And Parowan is looking at a future plan in this valley. So they, they, they just, they want to be proactive and, and start working on those things. The other thing I've been working on is some improvements of the fairgrounds. It's come time. Five years ago, when Chadnay was, was in that position, he told Joyce, our county fair director, that the old structure, the old bleachers had about five years left and, and we're approaching that this year. And so we're looking to probably, it's probably a sore topic with some of the old timers. It's, they got a lot of nostalgic value. But it's just, it's reaching its lifespan. I think it was built by the CCC originally in another location, torn apart and moved to that's, and, and so it's, and it's just.
Testament to the quality of the construction.
It is. I mean, it's been a great, but it, we just can't afford to have something happen. It's getting to that point in its life to where we, we just can't afford to have something happen with those old bleachers and hurt somebody and that. So we're going to demolish those. We're going to have the fair, tear those down, haul them off, and then we're going to replace that. I, I met with the building department this morning to do an RFP, request for proposal on a, so it'd be like a 34 by 153-foot slab with a cover. It'll match what's, what's there. And, and then we're also looking at building a 50 by 70 metal building just south of the fairground display buildings right there on the corner. And, and that'll be for float storage and some equipment storage. And so we're going to do an RFP and, and get that out to bid. So that'll be good. One last thing, we met last week with UDOT, with our county engineer and Commissioner Wood over roads. We met with UDOT and, and they're looking to add a turning lane or a passing lane by Woods Ranch from the college cabin up to the campground. And that'll be a great addition to our, our road up there. And so the county's going to be responsible to move our lodge pole fencing to the, to the south when that time comes. So that'll, that probably won't have to happen until next year, but they're going to start putting that out to bid. And that's going to be, really make that drive up the canyon a lot safer. So.
Did they end up having, are, are we going to have to move the flagpole or the sign?
Yeah, we'll have to move the sign. I don't know about the flagpole.
I know that they've expressed concern about that, but I don't know.
That road that goes up to the restroom, by the restrooms and, and goes up, it'll, the, the new fence will end up going right along that road.
Right, close to that.
Yeah. And so that's where the right-of-way will be. But it's going to be a big improvement with our canyon as you get up there and get behind some vehicles that are, people pass unsafely and to save two or three minutes in their travels. And so it'll be good. That's it.
I've been busy, but I'm going to, I'm going to kind of forego in the interest of time. Let's, we're going to recess for about five minutes. Let's come back at quarter after 10:00 and we'll start with the 10 o'clock calendar. That'll give us time to get a couple of things done and.
Yeah, I've got it cranked about as high as.
Am I doing better with my mic? Am I?
Do I need to be a rock star?
Rock star volume. All right, Commissioner, whenever you're ready.
I've got a text message that this will, this will save us much time later.
Very good.
Message that this will, this will save us. Okay. Agenda item number one is a public hearing. Consideration of possible approval of a zone change for property currently zoned agricultural 20, A20 to residential 5, R5, located near Mid Valley Road and Lund Highway, Cedar City, Utah 84721, approximately 42.48 acres located within the southwest quarter section 8, township 35 South, range 11 West. Salt Lake Basin, Meridian, Iron County, Utah, appraisers parcel number D-518-1, and the applicant is Garth and Kerry Jones.
It is actually.
Garth and Kerry Jones.
Did we get the wrong name?
Yeah, it's right on the one below and then I was going to.
I don't know what happened.
The change and then.
Also, it's to R, R2, not to R5, and I don't know why that was the case either. We had, their original request was for R5, and I may have put that in the request. I think I got Jensen right, but I think I may have missed up the R5. But the planning commission made a recommendation to rezone that to R2, and that's what the application actually is, is to R2. So.
We'll have Reed Erickson speak on it before the public hearing.
The property is located just north of Mid Valley Road on the east side of Lund Highway. Property is currently zoned A20. You can see R2 to the west of it. It has some R1 half to the south of it and the the east of it is R1 half as well. Just a little bit closer. This is the property. So there's a narrow strip runs right along the bottom of this property right here. You can see that separates it from Mid Valley Road, but it has frontage on Lund Highway. And we'll talk, there's a request for the zone change as well as a an eight lot minor subdivision. So I'll just kind of talk about them both as an introduction at the same time. And then when we get to the public hearing on that, I can confirm any other questions you might have. This is what the property looks like from an aerial. It is, there is a a property currently, a home on the the southeast. Currently, a home, corner of the property right here that takes its access off of Lund Highway. And it has frontage along this road here, and this is the location for the future belt route. So we'll talk about that a little bit as well. There is a pivot, two pivots to the north of this property, but this property has just been grazed and is not in agricultural production. This just identifies in the crosshatched area, the the property that's being rezoned and being requested for rezone is just the 42 acres. It's a single parcel currently on both sides of the road, and so the subdivision subsequent to this zone change will then what happened that I can't advance that now?
I don't know.
Don't know what's going on with that little sensitive. I don't know what's going on. Okay. The property is owned 42.48 acres and they will be served by water from the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District. Power is available there from Rocky Mountain Power, and it is just a little too far to connect to sewer under our ordinance to require sewer connection. So they're anticipating septic for that and don't plan to run sewer, and they don't have to under our ordinance because of the distance that it is away from sewer. Everything else has been taken care of. The planning commission has made a recommendation for approval for this. It is contiguous to R2 on the west side. And so this would be an extension of that zone.
Okay, we'll declare the public hearing on on item number one open. Anyone who would like to ask questions or comment on item number one?
Good morning. My name is Valney Morin, M-O-R-I-N, and my comments would apply to the other agenda items two and three as well. And and my question just basically has to do with the concerns that have been expressed before in this room about water availability. And I see that the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District is going to provide the water. What mechanism is in place for us to reach a point where we say we're using all the water we have and we just can't keep adding more and more? I'll just leave that question open and if you care to respond now or sometime later, that would be great. Thank you for your time.
Valney, they, the water district, when when somebody does a development, they have to bring water sufficient for that development, water rights. And they, it has to be 1934 or 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 older right, or they or they have to work out some kind of financial arrangement where they have to. If they're if they're newer rights, let's say they're 1945 rights or something, they would, they could bring those and they'll accept them, but they also have to bring enough money for the district to buy old rights to take care of that development. So in a way, as we move, in in my mind, and Reed, you can weigh in here, too, but in my mind, as as development happens, unless people can bring water to the table and to that development, it's that's going to limit growth to some degree.
Non-starter.
Right. And so and the the district has done a, they, we, when I was on the water board, we did pass an ordinance where if if people are willing to do more zero scape percentages on the on the properties with a strict CCNRs, that they they would be, they could come to the table with less water if they were willing to do that, and that's something that they're working on and and doing now, right, Reed?
So with with a two acre limitation, there's plenty of room for pretty large gardens that would require more water than just a residential dwelling for a family of four, for example. That, your comment brought to my mind one other question. What mechanism is there for communication between the water district and this board to assure that the representations made are are correct?
Well, does the water, does the Central Iron County Water, they have a water line out that so that it's it.
Water Conservancy District also provides a letter, a will serve.
Reed, could you come up to the microphone? Sorry.
The the Conservancy District, in order to to, one of the requirements for subdivision in the rezone is that they get a letter from the Water Conservancy District to show that they have entered into an agreement with them and the Water Conservancy District is prepared to serve this subdivision. And so they've done that due diligence in advance of the subdivision.
Okay, so so then from what I'm hearing is the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District would be the one that would say we don't have any more water for future development. And I'm guessing, hoping that there would be a way for them to communicate with you. And I don't know, is a member of the commission serve on that district just as a matter of course or or not?
On the board, on the board?
Yeah, do any of you three serve on the board? Okay.
But we, we, it's our duty to appoint those board members.
I see.
And a lot of them are elected officials from different cities.
So this kind of comes back to the comment that was made earlier by our county auditor. And as he was talking about controls and and protocols to make greater confidence in the public, I couldn't help but think of Ronald Reagan's comment about trust but verify. And and I guess that's really important here with respect to water issues as well.
And I and I do serve as the liaison to that to that water district. And so I'm, and I go to a lot of the meetings.
All right, great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Reed, do you have anything else for public hearing sake?
This really relates more to the subdivision coming next, but also in regard to the zoning. The the reason for the zoning at R2, even though these are proposed as over five acre lots, is because when they are not connected to sewer, they have to be a minimum of five acres. And so they are actually larger lots than even the two acres. And so for irrigation or any other water, they would have to develop some other water source or the ability to irrigate there because most people can't afford to pay the rates for water from the Conservancy District to irrigate with. And so that'll keep that, yeah, from happening as well. So the part of the reason for the two acre is because it's adjacent to R2, but also the minimum width for the street frontage on R2 fits with the subdivision where R5 requires a wider frontage of 300 feet and wouldn't really allow them to get the number of lots that they were looking for in this subdivision because of the belt route taking their access off of the the backside. So when we look at that subdivision, I'll explain that a little bit as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, seeing none, the chair will declare the public hearing in regards to item number one closed.
Well, these are the things that are considered in a zone change. This is the, just the the evaluation checklist that we use when the planning commission reviews and staff reviews. And we've talked about this. Each time we do a zone change, I just pull it up to show that we've looked at feasibility, and that's really what we're talking about here at this level, that they have considered, and it talks about adequacy of of water, sewer, drainage, you know, transportation corridors, all of the benefits that would outweigh otherwise or deprive if the development occurred, any detriment that would exist. And so those are all of the considerations that we take into to evaluate when we look at these projects. And I don't know if there's any of them specifically that you wish to discuss today, but those are the things that are we consider in a zone change.
Call for a motion.
Very well. I will move to to approve this zone change we've discussed for the property currently zoned agriculture 20, A20 to residential five acres, R2, so two, two acres.
R2.
Yeah, R2. Acres R2. So do we need to change the the five acres then to two or just the five acres?
Residential five, which is R.
Right. Residential five acres R2, located near Mid Valley Road and Lund Highway, Cedar City, Utah 84721, approximately 42.48 acres located within the southwest quarter section 8, township 35 South, range 11 West, Salt Lake Base and Meridian, Iron County, Utah, APN number D-518-1, and the applicant is Garth and Kerry Jensen.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion is approved. Move on to item number two, which is also set for a public hearing in consideration of possible approval of a zone change for property currently zoned ag, excuse me, agricultural 20 to light industrial, located at approximately 530 North, 5660 West, Cedar City, Utah, 84721. Approximately 28 acres located within the southeast quarter section 2 and northeast quarter section 11, township 36 thirty-six south, range twelve west, Salt Lake Base and Meridian, Iron County, Utah, with an appraiser's parcel number of E dash one sixty-six. The applicant is W E M F G Company and Carl Timson, also presented by Mr. Erickson.
This property is located just on the north side of the Iron Springs Road, just past the Y. You'll recall recently, there was a five-acre piece that's immediately adjacent to this that was also rezoned to light industrial. It's adjacent on the south side. You can see that it's in the annexation expansion area in tier two of Cedar City. We have coordinated with Cedar City. The white area to the east of this, it is adjacent to Cedar City Corp. And so, as you zoom in here, you can see that this property, this little five-acre piece doesn't show on the zoning map yet, but was just changed here a few months ago to light industrial, which is, everything on the south side of the Iron Springs Road is also light industrial. And then this little white dashed line right here that you can see is the Cedar City boundary. So this is the Port fifteen industrial area, and this property, Cedar City agreed that it made sense in terms of the zoning for light industrial, because that's the uses that are adjacent to it and will be used in the future. Here's just an aerial of the property outline there and a little bit shaded darker than the rest of the property. This is what it looks like from the air. They have good access, air, they have good access off of Iron Springs Road, and then there's also an easement that runs up the west side of this property that provides access to these back properties that is currently in place right now, and they will continue to honor that easement as it exists as they work towards developing this property. It's not being proposed for subdivision, just for the zone change so that they can use it commensurate with their intentions for light industrial uses. I might just mention that when we zone property, of course, we're considering all of the uses that could occur in that zone. And so one of the things that separates our light industrial from the heavier industrial or what we just have zoned as industrial, which is most of the property further west, is that these uses are a little bit lighter in respect that the compressors, the cutting equipment, anything that they use in the manufacturing process or assembly process has to occur indoors. So all of these uses are uses that would be within a building and managed better for noise and dust and things like that. So they're lighter from that aspect, other than, and in contrast, all of the properties further west, you know, mining and heavier uses where dust and noise would occur in a larger scale are outside of a building, that's the industrial zone. So this light industrial zone works better for manufacturing and stuff in buildings, and that's what the intentions are here. As mentioned, it's twenty-eight acres. This also will be provided water by the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District. And when, the great benefit there, I just listed, it includes culinary and fire flow. When a property is connected in part of the subdivision requirements, even though this isn't being subdivided, we're, but when we're rezoning to light industrial, and as you saw on the checklist, one of the things we're concerned about is fire protection, especially in an industrial or light industrial area where there's going to be welding and cutting and lots of other things that would generate a greater fire hazard, then a fire flow becomes an important component of the evaluation. And Central Iron County Water Conservancy District is, of course, able to provide that. So when we can get these projects tied on to that system and they can have fire flow, that helps a lot, reduce the risk. It is in the tier two area I mentioned, we coordinated with Cedar City, and they're in favor of this zoning. And so the Planning Commission has recommended approval for this rezone.
Okay. Chair will declare the public hearing open for agenda item number two. If there are any comments or questions from the public. Seeing none, a public hearing, our public hearing will be closed and we'll call for a motion on the item.
I'll move to approve the zone change for property currently zoned agriculture twenty, A20, to light industrial LI, located at approximately five thirty north, fifty-six sixty west, Cedar City, Utah eight four seven two one, approximately twenty-eight acres located within the southeast quarter section two and northeast quarter section eleven, township thirty-six south, range twelve west, Salt Lake Base and Meridian, Iron County, Utah. APN number E dash one six six, applicant is W E M F G C O, Carl Timson. Carl Timson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Number two is approved. I'll move on to number three. Public hearing discussion of possible approval of proposed minor subdivision. Garth and Kerry Jensen, minor subdivision of eight lots located near Lund Highway and Mid Valley Road, approximately seventy-nine point four-one acres within the southwest quarter section eight, township thirty-five south, range eleven west, Salt Lake Base and Meridian, Iron County, Utah. Appraiser's parcel number D dash five one eight dash one, and the applicant again is Garth and Kerry Jensen.
Thank you, Commissioner. This property, as mentioned previously, is a property that is a single parcel now that extends across both sides of Lund Highway. And so, even though we rezoned just a few minutes ago, the property on the east side, or the west side, the property on the east side will stay A20, but as part of the subdivision because we're making the, we're subdividing off these six lots right here and to essentially six-acre lots is about what they are. Wow, that is just touchy. And you can see here that there, there is a lot being created as a one-hundred-foot wide lot that would be acquired in the future by the county for the right-of-way, for the belt route. So they, their original proposal and part of the consideration for the rezoning and giving the narrower lots, even though they're larger lots, narrower frontage is because their intention originally was to subdivide the property by dividing it down the middle and having four lots off of this front, this side, and four lots front this side because of this road that went up here, they could improve that to the R5 standard and take their access off of that road. But because of the need for the belt route and having that not allow driveways off of that, then that changed their plans and eliminated their ability to have frontage off of this side because of the belt route without them putting another frontage road on the other side of the belt route, which was cost prohibitive. So that's what gave consideration to allow the narrower frontage, even because it's zoned R2, adjacent to R2, then they could get a hundred and eighty, eighty, a hundred and sixty-five foot of frontage is the requirement in R2. And this allows that their lots are actually two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and twenty feet wide. So it's still a good frontage on there, and you can see that the proposal in the subdivision is to have a shared driveway right here and right here for two lots to share a driveway. This first lot is the one that has the house on it already, and it already has a driveway here down on this south end of the lot, and so there would be just two more, and then there would be a third access point there for those six lots. So this lot on the east side would be lot number eight. It's kind of just like the remainder parcel. As a, as a minor subdivision, of course, there's not any road improvements being required as part of the subdivision to provide access to these lots. And so there is also a consideration, and we would request as approval in the motion, that there be two, well, three variations considered. Variations, as you're aware, are standards that are typically required in the subdivision that the commission recognizes are not practical or necessary in this case. And one of those is that this Mid Valley Road, or excuse me, Lund Highway up this side is a master-planned one-hundred-foot road. And the master plan for the city, Cedar City's master plan and the county's master plan that's been adopted by the county requires a hundred-foot right-of-way south of Mid Valley, all the way to Highway fifty-six. It shows us a hundred-foot master-planned road. But then the city's master plan ends at Lund Highway. The county had adopted previously...
Or Mid Valley, you mean?
Uh, Mid Valley, yeah. The county had just assumed that that would continue as a hundred-foot all the way out. And projects that have occurred further north here and along the, where the utility-scale solar farms are and stuff out there have acquired a hundred-foot right-of-way when those projects were done. The staff and the Planning Commission gave a lot of consideration and talked to a couple of planning, or plant, transportation planners that we're using currently for the master plans of the Cedar City and Enic master plans coordinating with the county. And we've all determined that it doesn't make sense or it's not necessary to expect the developer to provide and lose property for a hundred-foot right-of-way here and then just a quarter of a mile to the west, also have another hundred-foot right-of-way. In light of the fact that they're now having to give up this hundred feet and not, and lose two lots, we've determined that a seventy-five-foot right-of-way would be adequate here. So there's currently a sixty-six-foot right-of-way. This subdivision would then just give the additional width to have a seventy-five-foot right-of-way, recognizing that there's not a lot of traffic going north of that that wouldn't be accessed by the belt route. North, if, where the belt route continues up here and crosses, and let me...
Reed?
I was just gonna...
What, what street number is the belt route right there? About fifty-seven hundred west?
No. It's fifty-seven hundred west, much further. It swings around and comes up here. I think it's at about thirty-two hundred west, something like that. I think that's what this street is right here, is thirty-two hundred west.
Okay. Is that, are you confident enough I can go ahead and note that here in the minutes?
I'll, I'll look at the plat and verify that.
I just wanted to put the, and I just can't read it, so...
But it's just on the west side of this property.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so as it goes north from here, the belt route would cross Lund Highway, just up here a little ways, and so we felt like between the belt route and Mid Valley, there was really no reason to continue a hundred-foot width right there when we've got a hundred-foot width right here, and it'll be a five-lane, four with a turning lane. Seventy-five would give adequate room to have two lanes with a turning lane and still have plenty of room for drainage, because this is an important drainage corridor, and we want to make sure we retain room for that along the west side of Lund Highway. So this subdivision is a little unique in that it is requiring frontage for Lund Highway and on the backside of that, preparing a lot that can be acquired by the county, but is not being required to be donated to the county. The way that I have talked to the owners and the engineers about this is we don't have an acquisition strategy right now for the belt route. We haven't made a determination of how we would acquire properties. When we adopted the belt route master plan, we said that's one of the things we need to do, and I've talked to the new engineer about that being a priority, and that's one of the things we, we said, we, when there's two things we need to do is follow-up to do this. One was an access management plan to show where we would enter the, how, you know, we would have, how frequently we would have intersections and how people could access that. And the second would be an acquisition strategy in terms of how we would go about acquiring it. Right now, we said we're just making sure that everybody knows where it is, so as development occurs, like in this case, we can make provisions for it. Typically, when a subdivision comes into the county, they're expected to donate frontage for the road across their property for the half of a typical county road, which is sixty-six feet wide. So if they donated three, thirty-three feet for their project, then what Cedar City and most places do is they have the ability then to acquire the additional width or pay the property owner for the additional width beyond what their development would require or what's typically given when county subdivides. So...
So what's the belt route? Is that a hundred?
It's a hundred feet.
Hundred feet.
Yeah. So the additional sixty-four feet, or sixty-three feet, sixty-seven feet that's left from their thirty-three that they would typically donate is what we would acquire, we would purchase.
So can I just clarify? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get this right. So you're saying, you're talking about making an exception on the width of Lund Highway?
Lund Highway.
Okay.
From a hundred-foot right-of-way down to a seventy-five-foot right-of-way.
And that was the second exception?
That was the first. The second would be the street lighting, which is typically required in the, in that sub, in all subdivisions, but we often do a variation for that. In other words, exempt them from that requirement, because most in that area, you want to maintain night skies, and we don't have any other street lights out in that area. So that's something that we typically give an exception for.
Okay, okay. I thought that was the second one.
Well, those are the two.
Okay, very good.
So on the west, is the belt route totally on the west side of that property? Is it all on that property?
It is all on that property because there's a road that runs up this side of the property, and let me go back to this.
And will it, and will we need to, will we have to purchase that right-of-way from these landowners, or how does that work?
Yes, the hundred-foot, the hundred-foot. That's why it's being prepared as a lot currently. Let me get, you can see right here, this lot, this, this road that runs up the west side of this property would have typically given them access to lots across this frontage. But because now we need to maintain this so that these lots all have access and not have to have it off the belt route, but can have it off of a frontage road, then we would acquire the rest of the hundred feet than what is typically given in thirty-three. Now, some could argue in this case, since they're not receiving any benefit from the thirty-three feet even, and they can't have access there, that we should acquire the whole one hundred feet. And those are things that we would need to identify in that acquisition strategy, is how we acquire and what we pay for and what we expect to be donated when development occurs. I'm just, I told them that typically what we do and what the city typically does is they expect anytime there's a development and there's a road that's required as a master-planned road from, on their property, that thirty-three feet is what's typically given as a requirement for development. And then we would purchase everything above that. That's why I said that the additional sixty-seven feet is what we would purchase. We would pay above the thirty-three feet typically given with development.
Reed, to pause a question. I believe regardless, I mean, you eventually have to make the acquisition plan, but would that not be, that money, money that would be used to acquire, that wouldn't come out of the general fund, would it? Would probably the corridor preservation?
It would be whatever the county determines when they're ready to acquire it, but corridor preservation fund is what it would be for, and so our interest would be, and we talked about this at the RPO meeting, the rural organizing, planning organization, is that we have some money in that corridor preservation fund to acquire rights-of-way as they become available out of the belt route. As development occurs and the properties become available, then we can have that money to acquire the rights.
Sorry to belabor this, but how, remind me how we acquire that corridor preservation fund?
It's done by every time a vehicle is licensed in the county.
Okay, that's right.
Ten dollars is given or charged.
And that's...
Most people don't give it, but it's a part of the fee when licensing occurs.
Is that set aside just for the...
Years ago or so, the commission determined that, the state created the provision for that, and the county adopted to assess every license registration, ten dollars, to go into this fund for the purpose of acquisition of right-of-way for the future.
And is that available to counties and municipalities?
Yes, uh-huh. The Cedar City has used it more than anyone else.
Cove Drive up to the temple was used.
Yeah, Cove Drive up to the temple was used, the railroad along Industrial Road that was just acquired, the rights-of-way extension along Westview Drive that's being done now to take it from a seventy-five-foot to a, or sixty-six to a hundred-foot right-of-way that we are acquiring there. They've, they've got six hundred thousand dollars from the corridor preservation fund to acquire rights-of-way for that additional width of Westview Drive.
Good plan, isn't it?
So it's, it's the plan that was used to acquire the lots at Cedar Highlands.
Mm-hmm, right.
You know, for, when they were incorporated, they bought those two lots. That came from the corridor preservation fund to help improve that road. And so those are all of the projects, types of projects that are used when, when it's needed for the future. So that's a fund that would be available to acquire this. We would just need to enter into the negotiations and get the value and agree to do that. We just didn't have time to do all that for this subdivision, and there was no reason to hold the subdivision... to hold the subdivision up while that's worked out. So, that's why they just made that lot. And there's a condition on the plat that says that this Lot Seven, which is what that one hundred, uh, foot acre, or one hundred foot strip is, uh, let me go down to that again here. Uh, there's a, there's a condition on the plat down here at the bottom under the notes, number seven, that Lot Seven is prepared for the purchase, uh, and the county and the owner will negotiate, uh, the acquisition of that property for the, because currently it doesn't, it's not of adequate width and everything to meet the conditions for the subdivision. So, that's why we're, we're just kind of exempting that lot out from the typical size of the, the rest of the lots. It's because its purpose is for the belt route in the future.
So, uh, one question I have is, um, it looks like access is addressed on that easterly side of those, those smaller lots. Is there any note about access through the, the belt route? Like-
Prohibiting access to the belt route?
Yeah, right. Do we limit that?
That, that's, that would just be done through the access management plan, the county.
So, again, to your point, that's something that needs to-
And, and that's why there, the specific access points on the east side are called out for each of these lots so that they wouldn't expect to have access off the west side as well.
That's off Lund Highway.
Right. Their access will be off Lund Highway.
Yeah.
Not off of the belt route.
Now, isn't Lund Highway to the east of the larger parcel though? Isn't it that smaller road in the middle?
That's Lund right there.
This is Lund Highway.
It's Lund right there.
And these lots right here will take their access off of Lund Highway.
And then the belt routes on the west.
And then the belt route would be right here.
Hence the value of, of, sorry, uh, hence the value of establishing-
Master plan.
That belt, belt route, or we'd be playing catch-up big time.
We would be in trouble trying to figure out how to get through here with the belt route.
William Pressgrove.
I'd like to know, uh, how the belt route is built? Who pays the taxes on Lot Seven?
Uh, the, the property owner still will own Lot Seven, uh, and that's why they're interested in working with the county as soon as possible for the county to acquire that so that they no longer own it and have to pay taxes on it.
Any other questions, comments? Well, I've, the chair declared the public hearing open on agenda item number three. Uh, do we have any questions, comments on agenda item number three? Seeing none, uh, chair declares that public hearing closed and would ask for a motion.
We do approve the proposed minor subdivision, Garth and Kerry Jensen, minor subdivision, eight lots located near Lund Highway and Mid Valley Road, approximately seventy-nine point four-one acres within the southwest quarter, section eight, township thirty-five south, range eleven west, South Salt Lake Base, and Meridian, Iron County, Utah, APN number D dash five eighteen dash one. And again, the applicant was Kerry, or Garth and Kerry Jensen.
And commission, can I, on that motion, can I just ask you to consider adding the, the, that it's conditioned upon, uh, them finishing their, um, bonding, which is their financial assurance for the improvements? So, they have the improvements for the water system and those turnouts off of, uh, Lund Highway. Uh, we were kind of in the same situation with this one, with an engineer reviewing it and getting another engineer to review it. And by the time we did the advertising and had all that finished, we didn't have time to get it done, uh, for this hearing. And so, they have the Mylar, and I told them to hold it until they had all of their signatures on it, and then I'll get with the chair to get it signed.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, simply contingent upon their due diligence on their, uh, financial guarantee and getting the, the Mylar signed.
Is that the third of the, of the variation that you were hoping to have in the motion?
That, that would just be-
I, I didn't catch the first, where the-
Yeah, that would just be a condition of the motion, conditioned upon their signature and getting their bond.
I mean, did you want to-
The other two are variations, which is the hundred foot standard to seventy-five on Lund Highway and then the, no, street lighting.
Did you want that mentioned in the motion?
Those are just two variations.
So, I was-
Yeah, include those variations.
So, I'll add to my motion that they, they are required, contingent upon this approval, they're required to obtain the appropriate funding to, uh, pay for the infrastructure and the improvements. Is that-
Yes, and to include those variations, those two variations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second.
Sorry about making it more complicated.
No worries.
Appreciate it.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number three.
Reed, who, who administers the, uh, corridor preservation fund? Does that state?
The county does.
County does it. We, and what-
It used to be when it was first set up.
What kind of fund balances in there?
Uh, there's a little over three million dollars currently in there.
Yep.
But we've got, uh, that'll go fast when we start acquiring rights of way on the belt route.
Okay, thank you.
It's been building for like fifteen years or eighteen years, something like that. It was done in mid-two thousands, so-
Great, great foresight to have that.
It was good that we did, and it's, it's helped acquire some good projects to help roads get done.
Was that a legislative move to do that?
State legislature created the fund, and then the county said, "Yeah, we'll do that." Not all counties have done that, uh, but our county had the foresight to do that, and I think it's, it'll pay off big in the future.
It owes to, it owes to you and whoever else did that, and that's also benefited the-
County. Yeah, it'll be a good thing. Thank you.
All right. Move on to item number four, which is public comments. Remind anyone making a comment that there's a three-minute time limit. Uh, should not repeat others' comments, only items that are not agendized, uh, and no items that are relation, are related to the commission's role as an appeal board. They should be directed to the commission and no attacks on anyone else's character.
My name's William Pressgrove. I've got three items for the zoning. Uh, first off, there's a point five-six acres on the south side of my property that are continually shown as belonging to Tony McCucci. Tony McCucci's been deceased for quite a while. When I acquired the property that I own, that, uh, point five-six acres was included because, uh, the previous owners had purchased that or gained, uh, control of that prior to my purchasing the property. But, uh, the zoning map still shows that it belongs to, uh, Tony McCucci and, uh, that he's behind in his taxes on that property. If he doesn't own it, then how can they, um, put it on to, for tax sale because he's five years behind? And then, uh, somebody else owned that point five-six acres of my property. Point number two, we have two dairies in the county. Escalante Farms out west of, uh, Newcastle, which is zoned, uh, Intensivag, okay? Then we've got the Dutch, uh, uh, Dutch Cowboy Dairy up, uh, on I-15, and, uh, it is all zoned in several little different parcels of A-20. Uh, that's inconsistent. If you're gonna have, uh, Intensivag as describing one dairy, the other dairy should be Intensivag also and needs to be rezoned. Um, point number three, there are two parcels in Iron County that are not shown as being zoned as anything. Uh, if you pulled up the, uh, the GIS, I could show you where those two parcels are. Um, one of them has a house, you know, house on that property, but no zone. Um, and I could, I could add the Three Peaks Golf Course or the Golf, uh, home.
Proposal.
Yeah, the club, okay? Uh, that is supposed to be the special, uh, in, you know, special zoning type thing, and, uh, that is supposed to be in tier three. But, uh, this particular, uh, parcel for the Three Peaks Golf Course or Golf Area is, uh, in tier two. How can it, how can it be labeled as tier three in the, in the way that, uh, the, uh, description of that type of property is, yet it's, uh, all, all contained inside tier two? You know, those are questions I have. Um, I'm still working on getting, uh, things straightened around for Tony McCucci. His family doesn't want anything to do with it, uh, but yet the, the county's still showing that he owes back taxes, and it's my property. And it's, I'm being taxed for that property too. So, uh, we got, they're trying to get money out of two pots for the same parcel. Um, and, uh, and, and the other thing is, is if we're gonna have Intensivag in one place for a dairy, then the other dairy should be in Intensivag also. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
So, we do, we brought, you brought this up before. What do we need to do to get to the bottom of this? Do we-
I've got, uh, I've got-
I mean, if you talked to Reed, we don't have it on agenda item, so we can't really discuss it much here. So, we either need to put it on the agenda item or talk to Reed and get to the bottom of it, right?
I've, uh, I've emailed, uh, uh, I think it was either Reed to get the, because they asked for me to email them the questions I had for the planning commission. I don't have any, uh, email addresses for the planning commission, uh, so I sent a copy of the four questions I had to, to Reed. I haven't heard anything back, but I don't think that that included the Tony McCucci issue. Okay? And I've, uh, talked to, uh, Mountain View Title, Danny there, and he said that he's gonna have one of his investigators working on it because it didn't start showing back up as Tony McCucci's property until after we refinanced twice. And, uh, it went from, we had a, a, um, yeah, what is it called, um?
Is that a Nicole issue?
No, it's a Kerry issue.
It's what?
It's a Kerry issue.
Okay.
Or Title Company issue.
Yeah. And, and to your point, Bill, there are hundreds of these that come up each, each year, um, and there are issues of, um, sometimes double assessment or lack of assessment. Uh, and, um, Danny is, is very reputable title company and he will-
Well, I know, I know.
He will be able to work with the recorder's office.
Okay.
The question though, let me finish, is that, um, is it double, is it double assessed or should that exist? And that's something that needs to be investigated. And, and like I said, that's something that is a continual, um, process for the, the recorder's office and the mappers to try and, and work out. Um, and I'm not sure if there was something about your refinance that triggered that, but that's a, yeah, that's-
Yeah, 'cause we, we, when we purchased it, uh, we then, uh, put it into a revocable living trust.
Yeah.
And when you refinance, they can't refinance a revocable living trust, so they put it back into a joint tenants with my wife and I.
Right.
And, and all of a sudden, that piece of property is no longer part of ours. You know, when they, when they did the title search or whatever.
Yeah. I think, I think you'll get some answers, uh, through, through Mountain View Title and Danny on that particular one. I think, I think you'd be well-served to have the, the conversation on zoning, uh, with the zoning folks and, and, uh, a, 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 a better understanding of, of parcels in different zones and different, uh, situations go through the approval process.
I just don't know how this one particular piece of property that's outside the city's, uh, uh, part of it is outside the tier two, the other part's inside the tier two, but when you go to the zoning map, it doesn't have any label at all.
Well, uh, and, and sometimes that's, they, they leave those blank as the default A-20, so I'm not sure about that. And then as far as the Three Peaks Golf, as they get closer to actual construction, 'cause it's not built yet, then, uh, you know, they will have to make some of those adjustments. And, and if there isn't an, an error on the tier map, um, that will have to be addressed at that point.
Now, the only other issue I brought up to the, uh-
And these folks are remarkable and they work, they work hard, and I know that, you know, zonings are kind of a perpetual process.
I'm not saying that people aren't working hard and that mistakes, uh, you know, aren't being made, but, but when it gets to a point where, uh, you, you've got things that-
Come, would you come up to the mic so people can hear you?
When you, when you've got things that are set up to a point where, uh, you have more conditional use, uh, items on, on some of the zones than, than the normal for those zones, uh, then it, it indicates that, uh, zoning really doesn't matter. If you want to do something on your property, you just go get yourself a conditional use permit, you know? Uh, so, so that much.
The zoning does matter and it, it, it identifies what can be put in as a conditional use permit or administrative land use permit, depending on the zone. And I, I would suggest you spend some time with the folks at zoning to-
Well, you know, the, like, just one example, uh, A-20, okay? There are thirty-two permitted, uh, uses, fifty-eight conditional or, uh, we have to have a condition, twenty-three, uh, administrative, that you can't do any, can't do any of those things on your property. Can't do any of those things on your property. And you go down through it and, uh, there, you know, there are more exceptions than there are rules. Um, and, uh, that's, that's not the way a zone should be run. The, the, the exceptions should be exceptions, not the rule.
I, I'm just gonna get out of here. I, I'd be glad to respond to those if you want me to, but I, I'd ask Bill to send those again, Bill, if you would, 'cause I didn't get them. I, I didn't get an email about it, and I'd be glad to respond to them when I do.
Okay, and your email address?
Reed, R-E-E-D, at ironcounty.net. Yeah, I'd be glad to respond to those. Uh, this, there's just a simple, quick answer to the one, if you don't mind.
Please.
Uh, the reason that there are a variation of conditional, administrative, and permitted uses in a particular zoning district is because all of those uses, as determined by the, by the county commission in the, when they adopted the ordinance, is that those, all of those uses are expected to occur in that zone. It's not like it's an exception. A permitted use isn't something that you do and a conditional use is not able to do, except if you get a condition. A conditional use permit is perceived as an implied right to that use in that zone. There's the presumption that you will be able to do all of those uses that are listed as permitted, conditional, or administrative. The administrative or conditional uses simply, uh, require additional review in order to, uh, assure that there are mitigations or conditions put in place that will take care of or mitigate any foreseeable negative impact. So, we know that it's going to occur there. It's just that in some cases, it could have a questionable impact, but rather than prohibiting it out of that zone, we've said it can be a condition in that zone. That special review will then authorize it and be able to put conditions in the permit that, uh, mitigate any foreseeable impacts. So, the expectation is that permitted, administrative, and conditional uses are all uses that are anticipated in that zone. Okay? Did that help clarify that?
Yeah.
That screen's where I turned that off, or were you good?
I'm done.
Okay.
Yeah.
I switched it over and I wasn't sure if you knew.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, discussion regarding outdoor burning, referenced Utah Code Annotated sixty-five A dash eight dash two-eleven presented by David Bichard and Scott Stups. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate your time to take to listen to us.
Could you tell us your name?
I'm David Bichard.
You.
I'm, reside in Burl, western part of Iron County. Around a six-hundred acre alfalfa farm out there. Can't see nothing. Well, it started all this March fifth-third, two-twenty of this year. I went to go online to get a belt burning permit so I could burn some weeds along a fence. Lo and behold to me, Iron County couldn't start till March fifteenth. Way too late for what I need to do. So, I called my brother, or the, well, I called the fire chief first. Yeah, yeah, right after that, I called the fire chief of Burl. And he said, "Well, you gotta call Ryan Riddle." When I called Ryan Riddle, I probably said the wrong thing to Ryan, with my temper the way it was by that point in the morning. And so, he said I couldn't burn. "No way, that's okay." So, I called Utah Farm Bureau, the guy that I know, and he said, "According to state law, you can burn on agricultural land without a permit at any time." So, I had him send me the law. And I'd like the county attorney to read the law, please, and interpret that for me, how you interpret it, 'cause it is very confusing. You have the law out where you can see it, or you want me to bring my mic copy that I have?
Um, I'm not sure which one you're talking about. I did talk to, to Ryan.
Okay, the law is, and this is effective, when I've got is effective one-one, twenty-seventeen. Okay, the law is, and this is effective, when I've got is effective one-one, twenty-seventeen, it's sixty-five A-8-211.
Sixty-five A, eight, two?
One-one-one. Oh, there's a dash between the eight and the two, so.
Okay. Do you have a specific question about this?
Mine is six A.
You're gonna talk about six A?
Yep.
Okay. What, what is your specific question on six A?
Burning permit is not land, and now our irrigation ditches, is what it says.
Okay.
Now, the burning does not pose a threat to forest, range, or watershed land, which mine didn't. There's no forest or range out there. Watershed land, the land across the street from me is actually some more private land, it's all just sagebrush. Due course as use of control, as of control of the burn, individualized the nearest fire department, which I already done before I called Ryan. It'll occur. So, is it, does that, am I right, or is the county's ordinance chain going to defect over that? I do have no idea.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding your, what is it you're asking me?
Is if the state law is the law, or does the county ordinance oversee that law?
Well, that's kind of an interesting question.
You know, excuse me, which county ordinance? Do you know the ordinance number?
The county ordinance I've got here, I guess is the county ordinance, is R-307-202-3.
So, that isn't a county ordinance, that would be an administrative rule.
Okay, so this is just administrative rule.
So, it's, uh, the, so a lot of times, a state statute will give authority to an administrative agency to create rules to implement those state rules, or the state statute. Hopefully that makes-
Well, this, rule number two does not follow the state law.
Mission Standards, Rule Number Two. So, you're saying, let's see-
Says burning of weed growth along a ditch bank, or clearance of ditches for irrigation purposes, is what it's saying here.
Commissioner, that ordinance is behind tab three in the books that I gave you guys.
Thanks, Ryan. The other question I have, is this, is this county thing, or is this?
This one right here? These are all administrative, these are, these are administrative rules under DEQ.
Okay, so it would be state.
It'd be state.
Okay, DEQ says, if within the counties of Washington Kane, San Juan, Iron, Garfield, Beaver, Payette, Wayne, and Garfield, and Emery County, the Mobile Fire Agency may issue a permit between March first and May thirtieth. That is where I went online to get the permit, and it says Iron County's March fifteenth. What I would like the Commission to do is figure out how Iron County got to be March fifteenth, when the other counties are still March first. Because if I, I looked on the internet, that these Washington and Beaver County is March first.
The answer to that is behind tab six in your book that I provided.
So, can we hear what it said? Yeah, are, are you, are you finished?
I guess so.
Well, should we, let's, let's have, uh-
Let's have Ryan talk.
Let Mr. Riddle come up and explain in the microphone on the record.
Okay.
And then, if there's other questions, we'll move back and forth.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm gonna start with some history. I think that that will be helpful to, to everybody here, on how we got to where we're at with the outdoor burning ordinance. And Mike Edwards was a, a big part of this. On the front cover of your, of your manuals that I provided you, are some examples of, of what was going on prior to the adoption of the, the ordinance. Iron County could allow people, residents, non-residents, to burn during a one-month period of time. That one-month period of time was April fifteenth to May fifteenth. It was solely calendar-based. And that one month window was, was a window that was provided by Air Quality, State of Utah, DEQ. And the reason for that is because those days, typically, we don't run into any clearing index issues, and I'll explain the clearing index here in just a minute. As you know, being residents, those are the windiest, that's the windiest period of time in Iron County. And so, our escapes were astronomical, because we were trying to get as much burning as we could done in thirty days, regardless of the conditions. So, it was, we've only got a short period of time, we gotta make this happen.
I might want to clarify what you mean by escapes. When you said escapes were astronomical, what does that mean?
Okay, escape, escape controlled burns.
So, they got out of control?
They got out of control. Created wildfires, which spared a response from local fire departments, on up through assistance with federal government. Some examples there was, uh, two thousand fourteen, an unattended ag burn that forced the evacuation of thirty homes, cost the, the taxpayers about two thousand dollars to suppress. There was forty-five acres burned during that burn. The individual was burning fence lines and some piles on their property. Left them under, unattended. The following day, there was a wind event. They were unmonitored, uncontrolled. They escaped the control. Two thousand fifteen, another unattended ag burn, burning abandoned, they were burning abandoned mobile homes. You can see in the picture there, the materials that they were burning. They were, they were, they called that an agricultural burn, because it was zoned A-20. The intent of that was to clean up those mobile homes. Definitely not a vegetation burn. Smoke management got involved. There was damage done to adjoining property. Eight acres was burned, approximately sixty-three hundred in suppression costs. Two thousand sixteen, another unattended agricultural burn. They were burning the back of a stock pond. The aircraft flying the Hicks Creek Fire, the Hicks Creek Fire was one in Church's Canyon, that came down and unthreatened homes. The aircraft that was flying the Hicks Creek Fire actually saw, the Hicks Creek Fire actually saw the smoke. They diverted aircraft over, and I, had they not noticed it and seen it, it was a very windy day, I think we probably would've lost the upper basin. That fire was very aggressive. Eighteen thousand dollars in suppression costs. Two thousand seventeen, another debris burn, burning slash pile. The individual was unprepared for the fire. None of these reported to the fire department that they were gonna be burning. None of them acquired a burn permit. Seventy-one thousand acres was burned, twenty-six structures lost, one loss of life during rehab efforts, and forty-one million dollars in suppression costs, which is, at the time, the, the most expensive fire in Utah's history.
In all fairness, that whole fire can't be blamed on that individual, from what I understand, because that fire was pretty much out, and then they decided to do a back burn, and it got out of control. Is that correct?
We could argue that another day.
Well, I'm just, just for the record.
Saturday, Saturday, it's suspected that a, an outdoor fire burned two, two homes, or two trailers, north of Cedar City, off of the, off of the Land Highway. That's the most recent. We've had several fires already this year because of the dry conditions. Those are just some screenshot examples of, of why we got to where we were at. If you want to look at the statistics behind page one, or tab one, you can see from two thousand two, with the exception of a couple, couple of anomalies, through two thousand sixteen, debris burning was our number one cause of human-caused fires in Iron County. The trend was quite concerning. I worked with the Commissioners, with the Sheriff's Office, with the Attorney's Office, and we developed the, the ordinance, which is behind tab three. And that, that was a response to-
There's people that want to listen to this. I wonder if we can get on, or, see what you're talking about. I wonder if we can get it on John's computer, so they can see what you're talking about. I don't know how to do any of this. Do you know where he is?
I don't know. Hey, we're not streaming, is that the point?
Well, I think the, the individuals in the back would like to know what he's referring to. So, if they're talking about an ordinance, I'm wondering if I can pull it up, so they can see what he's talking about.
Well, he gave us a book, whip it in, that, that's not on that.
We'd, we'd kinda like to know what you're looking at. That's kinda what I'm, I'm trying to get that going. There's a lot of tabs, what we're looking at. See the book? I'm wondering if we can pull up the ordinances that he's talking about, so that-
State or-
So, everyone else can see. You're talking about tab three, that's-
John, go to Iron County Fire, go to the fire website on Iron County.
Sorry, here's your trigger back.
And there should be a link to Utah State Codes-
There's your chair, John.
-under Quick Links. It's our, our county website, ironcounty.net. Under Departments, you'll see Fire.
Can you zoom that in?
So, and we'll kinda go through these codes. We'll go down to sixty-five A-201, right there. So, uncontrolled fires, public nuisance. Any fire on forest, range, watershed, or wildland urban interface land in the state of Utah, burning uncontrolled, without proper and adequate action being taken to manage as a public nuisance. So, that, that starts out, as we kinda go into these, sixty-five A-8-202. I'll point out, number one, a county shall abate the public nuisance caused by wildfire on, on unincorporated privately-owned, or county-owned forest, range, watershed, watershed, and wildland urban interface lands within its boundaries. And skip number two. And number three, a county shall reduce the risk of wildfire to unincorporated privately-owned, or county-owned forest, range, watershed, and wildland urban interface land within the county's boundaries with private landowner permission, through appropriate wildfire prevention, preparedness, and mitigation actions. So, the key topic in, in this discussion is that, is that prevention. Number five, number, ooh, let's see here, where am I? Two oh three, right there. Number six, nothing in this section excuses a private landowner from complying with applicable county ordinance. Now, now if you'll go to sixty-five A-8-211, scroll down, this is the, the code that's in question. Closed fire season, notice violations, burning permits, personal liability exemptions from burning permits. So, number one, the period from June first to October is when that code applies. And it goes on. Number two, Mr. Bouchard brought up number six, which is, a burning permit is not required for the burning of fence lines on cultivated lands, canals, or irrigation ditches if the burning does not pose threat to forest, range, or watershed lands, due care is used in the control of the burning, and the individual notifies the nearest fire department of the approximate time the burning will occur. And then it goes on to failure to notify the nearest fire department. Again, that code applies June first, October thirty-first. Now, if you'll pull up the Iron County Ordinance, off of that same webpage. Let's see. Under Quick Links, Quick Reference, Fire Code and Ordinance. Actually, I think it was in that same document, my apologies. You'll just scroll down to the bottom of that. I think you're gonna be right around, okay, never mind. Go back to the main page. So, keep, keep going. Keep going. Um, so, let's see. Go back up just a little bit. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Okay, right. Go down just a little bit, sorry. Outdoor burn permit. Okay, right there. Iron County, under rules, you'll go down to the second paragraph there. Iron County desires to allow residents, visitors, commercial, and agricultural industries to burn materials allowed by state law, when environmental, safety, and regulatory conditions are appropriate. Statutory closed fire season, burn permits required from the fire warden, June first to October, October thirty-first. So, when we developed this ordinance, it was developed to encourage people to use fire as a tool. And rather than the, the one-month, thirty-day period, when conditions weren't ideal, we actually opened it up from March first, literally through November fifteenth, because I can issue a permit, June first to October thirty-first. So, we extended the, the burning days by forty-four days, with the intent of burning on the right day, not necessarily the next day. Our intent, as you can see in that very first paragraph, was, was to use fire as a tool, not to, not to be a hindrance. Now, we had to meet state, state laws. And one of those state laws that we had to, that we had to meet was air quality. And unfortunately, nobody is exempt from the air quality rules. And that's where, that's where some of this gets into contradictory, between one state code saying that you don't have to have a permit, and permission, and another one saying that, yes, you do. When I do prescribe burn, I have to meet air quality. Even as a, as a government agency, we have to meet air quality. And I can understand that, and I can appreciate that from a health standpoint. What happened is, and, and I'm sorry that I can't pull this up, but behind your, your tab six is the permit system failure. The ordinance identifies March first, October, or, March first as the opening date. On March first, there was some sort of a glitch in DEQ's system. So, our burn permits are actually run through the DEQ website. They manage the air quality clearing index for us. For whatever reason, that, that did not turn on, on March first, which led to Mr. Bouchard not being able to get a burn permit. When I recognized the problem after he called me, I called Air Quality and said, why is it showing the fifteenth? Why did this not open? We don't know. So, I rectified that. You can see the email.
So, ours is March first?
Ours is March first. Our, our outdoor burning ordinance is the maximum allowed by state code. Again, the intent is to allow people to burn. Again, the intent is to allow people to burn. I contacted air quality, you can see the email, to have it turned back on. I contacted Iron County IT. I tried to make this as simple as possible for people to obtain burn permits. Um, and one of those, one of those simplicities is to tell people to go to IronCountyFire.net. Under Quick Links, you'll see Request Burn Permit. And so I contacted our IT, our county IT, because that Quick Link wasn't working for some reason. And they told me that would be resolved today with the hiring of a new webmaster. So that's where that failure took, took place. Um, Mr. Bissart was very upset when he contacted me. And rather than going back and forth with him over the phone, as quickly as I could, I resolved the issues with DEQ. And the very last page in your book is, is a copy of Mr. Bissart's burn permit that I personally drove out west and handed him.
So there's some ambiguity then. One says you don't need a permit, but we, they do. So what, where, where are we off?
So, so when one issues a permit, the permit is good for three days at a time. There's no cost associated with those permits, and you can, you can apply for as many as you want. Um, we don't...
The county?
The county, the state. We don't, in Iron County, we don't stop people from burning. Conditions do. If we don't meet air quality, or if it's a dry, hot, windy day, and it just doesn't make sense to burn, then we don't issue the permits.
How often does that happen? How, I mean, is air quality, 'cause we get these fires in California that blow the smoke up here.
It's terrible.
It ruins it for us, right? So then we can't burn because that's already in the air? Is that how it is?
No. So I'll, I'll explain the air quality clearing index. Um, the air quality index is a zero to a thousand plus is, is the range. And what that ability is, is for smoke to lift and dissipate in the atmosphere. So you'll see, um, in the winter time, you'll see that haze just kinda hanging over Cedar City or, or in the West Desert over the valleys. That's a, that's a visual indication that, uh, we see it on the news all the time in Salt Lake. The difference between Salt Lake and sunny southwest Utah is the particulate matter that's being emitted. So Salt Lake gets their nasty air because it becomes trapped under an inversion. We have those exact same inversions here. We don't see it because we don't have the particulate matter. Our industry, our burning, our vehicle use, whatever it may be, isn't obviously as, as, as much as they have on the Wasatch Front. So what happens, um, when we get an inversion is that, that air is trapped, usually cold air is trapped underneath warm air, and the clearing index on those days can be less than a hundred. And that, obviously, a no-burn day. Five hundred is the, is the minimum that we can allow outdoor burning. And again, that's managed by the air quality website, which is very handy for us because you can't even apply for the permit if it's a bad air day. Takes, it takes the work out of it for us. It does not take into account environmental conditions. That, that falls on us. And, um, if you want to turn to, let's see, behind tab four, there's an example of a burn permit that was requested on Friday the fifth, um, after a high wind advisory had been posted by the National Weather Service. So that individual obviously didn't look at the weather to see that the wind was expected to blow between twenty and twenty-five miles per hour with gusts up to fifty-five. So the burn permit system captures that, and that's where our preventative tool comes into play. Because now I can say, you know what, maybe tomorrow isn't the best day to burn. And in this case, this individual, when I talked to him on the phone, said, "Oh yeah, I definitely don't wanna burn on a windy day." Nobody wants an escape fire, so if I can help prevent it from happening, then it's our due diligence to do that. And so I said, "However, if you can, Sunday looks like a good day." And the individual called in and completed the burn on Sunday. There again, it's, it's managed by the environmental conditions and the air quality conditions versus you and me saying, "Well, we only allow burning from April fifteenth to May fifteenth." And the objective behind the ordinance, as it's stated in the second, in the second, uh, paragraph, is not for us to restrict burning, it's for us to educate the public when, when it's the right time to burn. I work, it's a statutory closure, November fifteenth, the last day of February. I work with, with owners that have large slash piles, especially on the mountain, and I work closely with air quality. I actually write a burn plan, make air quality happy, and when we have clearing index, then I work with that private landowner and, and the burning is completed, even during the winter time during that statutory closure. And again, it's not my intent to stop somebody from burning, it's my intent to protect them from having an escape. And it's our intent to prevent those catastrophic events that cost the taxpayer an astronomical amount of money, um, for one, but more so those false alarms and, uh, those, uh, unfortunate mishaps where people get hurt, private property gets burned, that sort of thing. So, in the case of, of Mr. Bissart, um, there was failures in the system. Wasn't allowed the time to look into what that failure was, when he called and said, "I don't need a burn permit and I'm doing this," and, and so I'm, I'm behind the curve. But as you can plainly see on the last page, that, that I indeed...
Yeah, and I don't think that was the reason for putting this on the agenda. I mean, I went to the Farm Bureau meeting the night late, and that was a concern they brought up to me, and I, I wanted to be educated more myself.
Sure.
So I just thought, let's put it on the agenda and we can hash it out and talk about it, so we understand it. So it sounds like, does the language we've, they first read where it says you don't have to need, have a permit, does that need to be, I mean, it seems contradictory.
That's a statutory, and although it's got the date of two thousand and seventeen, that, that statute has been in, in for a long, long time. And the key in that statute that's concerning is you have to notify the local fire department. Now, in Iron County...
They should, they should make that clear, right?
We have one fire department that's staffed. And when you see smoke, when you're driving down the road, or you look out your window, or whatever it may be, when you see smoke, who do you call? We call nine-one-one. That statute goes way, way back before the nine-one-one even existed. And so the other part of this, again, is not to restrict people from burning. We, we want these guys to do what they have to do on their farms and on private property. We want to, to facilitate that. But we don't want, of course, ninety percent of our firefighters are volunteer. We don't want those false alarms. We don't want the escape fires that, that cause problems, not only for us, but, but for them, the public, you know? In the case...
That's the reason for the permit, is somebody calls, or reports a fire, you say, "No." You look it up and say, "No, that's a, that's a true burn."
Yes. And, and there's documentation in there. When a person applies for a permit, they enter the information into the permit program. Or, which is online, or they can contact, and if you wanna scroll down a little bit, there's a phone number they can contact. So if an individual does not have access to, right there, go up just a little bit, nope, other way, right there, eight oh one, five three six, four thousand. If an individual does not have access to the internet, they can call that number, and somebody at DEQ will fill that permit out for them. As soon as that permit is filled out, within minutes, I get an email notification. And there's examples in your packet. Um, I got one at eight o'clock the other night, and within three minutes, or less than five minutes, I had that returned. They apply for the permit, I review the permit. If I need to contact that in, individual and ask them questions about what they're burning, or in the case of the other day, "Hey, look, you got a wind event coming in, let's protect each other from, from the catastrophes that can happen." Um, I can make that contact to that individual, and we pick the right day to burn versus the calendar day. Um, I turn that, that permit around as quickly as I possibly can. Again, it's usually less than five minutes. There's no cost with those permits. We chose not to charge people because we want people to do this. And then I take that burn permit, and I actually forward that burn permit application to the local fire department and the local nine-one-one center. The conditions of the permit is the day of the burn that they contact those two entities prior to burning. And the reason that we've done that, checks and balances. Ryan Riddle is not the only one that can, uh, give the person, uh, permission to burn. I'm there as a technical expert. If the fire department has a large incident going, and they choose to deny the, the permit because of that, makes sense. You know, take, for instance, Cedar City Fire Department. If they're, if they're tied up with a structure fire and they don't have resources, it really doesn't make sense for people to put more, more fire on the ground. So they do have the ability to say, "No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna allow you to burn today." That is less than one percent of the time. Um, the nine-one-one center gets a phone call, verifies the burn permit number, and the person is, is okay to burn. That way, when you're driving, anybody's driving down the road, they look out the window, they see smoke, the neighbor sees smoke, they call nine-one-one, everybody's in the know of what's going on, and we're not sending out a, an alarm, a false alarm. So we, we, and I think Mike can remember when we worked through this, it, it took us several years, um, to work through the ordinance. And again, it was, it was taking it from that thirty-day window to the full extent of Utah State Law and made it condition-based. And unfortunately, I wish I had a, a number in that I could call Mother Nature and change some of our environmental issues, but I don't. And so what closes our outdoor burning period are, are those environmental and, and air quality issues, which is something that none of us have control over.
All right.
Can I answer any questions?
Come on up, sir. Scott Stubbs, Iron County Farm Bureau. Definitely in agriculture, we need to be able to burn. And I think Dave tried to do things by the, by the book. He wanted to get going early, it's dry, things are gonna get drier, it's gonna be worse. The system was broke. And, and here we got into all of this when maybe the system needed to be checked. I mean, he tried to get, get the permit and everything. A lot of the examples that we were given on agriculture fires getting away were against the law.
Sure.
So, so he wasn't trying to do that. But we definitely need this to work correct. And we're willing to get the permits we need and do it so that we can all work together. We get that we, I mean, shoot, you even start a campfire anymore, you kinda worry about who's gonna show up.
Right.
So, so we get all of that. But, but this thing, I mean, it was broken, and, and it's not really Dave's fault. I mean, he got a little stirred up because he was, he was reading the laws and sure, and following this, so.
It was truly a misunderstanding of a system failure that, that was, I was unaware of, and I understand it. And I would love to come to the Farm Bureau and explain this. I've, I've hit many of the culinary, I've, I've hit some of the different groups, but that's not one that I've been able to come through. I would love to come and, and work through this process, 'cause again, my intent is to allow agricultural, industrial, whatever it may be.
Well, and if the thing would've functioned correct, this wouldn't have been an issue. He was following the rules.
He was.
So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Let's see the rules again, 'cause I...
Uh, Ryan, would that be the, the code?
Right up there, it's out there, burning something. Keep going down.
There?
Burning right there. to you when you came in as a commissioner. Um, we weren't able to have that meeting because things got locked down last year. But this is something that I plan to cover with you and, and Marilyn. Hopefully, as soon as she gets back, we can get a date set so we can go over some of these things to help you guys better understand them. But I'm always happy to, to answer these type of questions, so.
Going back to that two thousand and seventeen statute or law, whatever, does that need to be modified? Then parentheses, say...
So, so right now...
Seems like that's right.
Yeah.
Creates confusion.
A little bit of insight as to what is going on. Uh, the state of Utah Division of Forestry, our, our organization is actually working with air quality to try and figure some of these contradictory rules and, and statutes out. And so it is actually under, under review. They're working on getting some committees together to, to kinda work through some of that, because it, it's a, it's a statewide prob, uh, problem. And ironically, I'm not gonna toot my horn at all, or, or the county's horn at all, but, um, our ordinance is, is literally the best ordinance in the state right now. And there's a lot of people that, that look at it and like it because it's working. You can see the reduction in, in, uh, escape fires, you can see the, the statistics from that. And then if you, if you look at, um, how many burn permits I'm issuing, um, upwards of five hundred permits. And so people are getting the opportunity to burn as often as I can facilitate that, um, based off of weather conditions, so. It truly is a great ordinance, and there was a ton of work that went into it. Um, like I say, we had a lot of input from a lot of folks, and bottom line, the intent was that we wanted to facilitate people burning on the right day.
One, one compliment in, uh, local government is that you get a good ordinance, and often it'll get plagiarized. And I think you'll see versions of our ordinance in, in different areas around the state.
Yeah, yeah. And it, it is a fairly new ordinance, and, and there's a, you know, nothin's ever perfect, especially right out of the gate, but, um, there's a couple of things, and, and my apologies for not reaching out to the Farm Bureau, that's not one that I thought of. Of course, I, I worked very closely with Alma on this, this ordinance, him and Dave Miller were the two biggest contributors. Um, but I've tried to reach out to as many groups as I can to get, get input prior to the ordinance and then educate afterwards, so.
Education's key, you know?
It really is, it really is.
Did you get everything you need?
I think so, but I, I just wanna clarify a few things. But that's, I appreciate Ryan Kellman and appreciate your bite-ness, Paul, it was, well, I wasn't quite ready for today, but I was. I'm not a public speaker, so. The way, the guy that sent me this law, Dr. Ryan on the phone, is actually a fire chief from another area, and the way he reads the law is that this is any time during the year. So something...
So what I'd, what I'd like to do with you, Mr. Bissart, is I, I'll, I'm happy to sit down and talk with you.
Okay.
Um, let's go over the conflicting statutes and ordinances. I don't remember everything about when we start.
Let's, let's try to get things so that...
Yeah, let's try and get it figured out so there's an understanding.
So that we know what's going on.
So I'll follow you out when we're done here today, and we'll talk a bit about it, and we'll, I'll get your contact information, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, we appreciate the conversation. There's a lot of these things, issues that come up that never make it to the commission, so we, we appreciate it when it does, so we can address it, and, oh, thank you for, for taking your time to come and talk to us.
This is a, Ryan, I've been trying to go to some of these Farm Bureau meetings, they're awesome, and, and it sounds like that'd be a great forum for you to go and...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I would love to come out, and again, my intent is to, is to work with these folks, and anybody...
Sure.
Um, 'cause fire is a great tool. Um, and in the right place at the right time, it can do some good things, so. Uh, Mike, yeah, I'd love to, to meet with anybody and work with them, so.
When's your next meeting, Scott? Scott, when's your next meeting?
Um, April first. We meet at one, seven o'clock at the Springs Hilton Hotel in Cedar City, which is on the south end of town.
Can you email me?
Yeah.
The date and time?
Yeah.
I'd love to be there. And I appreciate you guys coming in. I know it takes away from your works.
Thank you, everybody involved. Uh, number six, we have an update on construction, uh, at Cedar Brakes. I don't see Kathleen.
No, I didn't see her at all today.
I haven't seen her at all today, I didn't know if...
Maybe she's here, or if you... I wonder if she wanted to be on a different meeting or something. We'll, 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 we'll ask her to come back.
Okay. She entertains me, I, I really like watching Kathleen, because she's, she's just like this little fireball of very passionate energy, I enjoy her updates. I enjoy her updates. She's got some cool things going. But we will go past that. Uh, number seven, discussion approval of extending a cooperative forest road agreement between Iron County and the USDA Forest Service Dixie National Forest.
I didn't. Oh, I can speak to that, sorry, I've got. I've got an appraiser coming and in my haste, I didn't prepare for him. Okay. Make sure I understand this, speak to it. This is an extension, this is an extension of existing uh contract. The only change is that it's um extending the expiration date from April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one to January fifth, twenty twenty-two. And I believe. What this contract does is um reimburses Iron County for maintenance that we do on roads that fall within uh the Dixie, uh the Dixie National Forest. I didn't see an amount forthcoming, but what they do is they they calculate it um by miles of of road. So for example, we do one point four-nine miles on the Bowery Road from the cattle guard at the upper end of the Yankee Reservoir uh to the Sydney to Sidney Valley. Um, we do um the Garfield-Iron County lineup to the rim on the Clear Creek Canyon Road, which is four point six-four miles. And so they calculate the miles of road that that are um that that we take care of um and then reimburse us for that. And I think it's just because those roads fall within our our regular system and then we update those. So this is, and I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to really read this closely, but the uh to explain it, but this basically extends the performance period on that uh until January fifth, twenty twenty-two, at which point it would be renewed again. So here's that.
I would call for a call for a motion.
All right. I'll move to grant approval of extending a cooperative forest road agreement between Iron County and the USDA Forest Service Dixie National Forest, as outlined in the agreement.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me see if I can get a hold of, actually, I'll just do uh. Oh, she's right there.
I was gonna say, if you're calling.
I looked at your phone, that's that's, she's right there.
No. Well, she's usually paying attention, but I hadn't seen her. But I I've gotten to where if I don't have my glasses on, I can't see. So sorry.
John, she's way ahead of you, man.
Always, and all the time, yes.
All right, uh, for for the next two items, items number eight and nine, uh, we're gonna step out of our role as the Board of Commissioners and enter into our convene as the Board of Equalization for these two items. Turn the time over to Christine. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I think this is the first agenda item. This is uh for the religious and charitable. And uh today was, uh, this year was a challenging year to get everybody to turn in their applications. I don't know what the deal was, but oh my goodness. So um the uh, okay. Okay, the the top one, um, that has the twenty twenty-one applications for exemption. This is uh the exemptions that have been requested in its entirety. Um, the second uh group of papers that I s I provided that are um charitable, educational, religious changes, this is the Reader's Digest version. So um if you don't mind, I'll do the Reader's Digest version so we can move things along a little bit.
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, okay, so going off the the two-page paper. Um, the Christ the King Catholic Church uh submitted an application uh for a vehicle. Uh, after reviewing the ownership of the vehicle, it was determined that it was not owned by the Catholic Church. It was owned by the priest and it was in his name, so it didn't qualify. So um uh there was that one. Um, and do you want me to kind of give you my uh recommendation as we go down these few?
Yes, please, that's always helpful.
All right, okay. So on the Catholic Church for their twen- uh two thousand seven Ford Explorer, my recommendation is to deny that one. Um, the Enoch First Ward, uh, that was, that's an LDS ward. It is for a two thousand and five pace American trailer. I tried a couple of different times to reach them by phone after the due date, which was last Monday on March first. Uh, never heard back from them. It is just, it's for a trailer that has been used by the the scouting organization in the past. And so it may not even be around anymore. So where they didn't apply, um, I would suggest that we deny that one. The same thing for the Mountain View LDS Ward. It was also for a trailer that had previously been used by the scouting program. Uh, the fourth item, the National Mustang Association is for a uh twenty fourteen homemade, or twenty, a fourteen-foot homemade trailer. Um, that one was not listed on their application and has, uh, they are not using it anymore. I would recommend that we deny that one. Uh, the next grouping that are in black, those are from the uh turn organization for a number of vehicles. Uh, they have sold uh some of their properties last year. Uh, and therefore, they don't need all of these vehicles that they were using. Um, so they got rid of everything that they had. I think there's ten or eleven of them there. Uh, my recommendation is obviously to deny that because they don't own them anymore. And then the two bottom ones um are for uh two new vehicles that they are have purchased. And so those, whoops, those should be um added as an exempt property so that they don't pay taxes on those. Okay, the other page, um, this is for, I guess I should have started with that one, but this one is for uh actual real property.
We back to the first page?
Yep.
Of this?
Sorry, I had them stapled backwards and I didn't realize it until, I was gonna, wait a minute, oh, I did, so I apologize on that. Um, okay, so the Cedar Housing uh there at the top, that is a new property that they have purchased. Um, they purchase these properties and then are able to help individuals that are uh in low uh qualify under their low-income standards um and can eventually own a home. Um, the Corporation of the Episcopal Diocese of Utah um in coming up with addresses, which some of the properties over the years, I, the address had just never been put on the spreadsheet. And since I'm retiring uh fairly soon, and this is my last hurrah for these, I figured I better get those lists updated. Um, anyway, when I went to add them, the list on this and looked it up, I realized that it is vacant land. And vacant land does not qualify under the statutes. Uh, if if it was next to their building and they were using it for parking, yes, it would most likely qualify. But this is down around the corner and on the other side of the block, and it's just sitting there. So I'm assuming it's, you know, they'll use it for some other purpose down the line. So we need to re- uh add that one back to the tax rolls.
This is the third one down, right?
Uh, the second one, Corporation of Episcopal, oh, let's see.
The third one down?
Oh, wait a minute.
Red, in the red. B seven oh eight dash two?
B seven oh eight dash two, yes.
Okay. And so you're recommending that be denied?
That one, yes, that one should be denied. That's right, I added Christ the King in this list, didn't I? Okay. Uh, the next three that are in red, that are Crossroads of the West Council, um, that is the uh Boy Scouts of America, the National Parks Council. Uh, their property that they have at Parowan Canyon at uh there just before you, at the bottom of where you start climbing.
Thunder Ridge?
The Thunder Ridge, thank you, can think of it. Thunder Ridge, um, they consolidated some of those properties and changed them from the name of the National Parks Council to the Crossroads of of the West Council. So they had a a name change. So the top three, Crossroads of the West, no longer exist. Um, one of the, they had four properties, the fourth property didn't change at all. They did a name change, but that was it. And so it's fine, these second are.
First three you recommended we deny.
Right.
And then the last two in green.
And the last two in green, they are new properties um with new serial numbers. So I recommend.
It's the same land, but the the partial numbers were.
Were changed.
Changed.
And the name, the name of the company and they were, or the organization, they've rerecorded them. Um, IHC Health Services, um, they added a new property on their application, but they did not submit the um the application that's required for a new property. So um after communicating with the their attorney, um, they um agreed with that and they will apply for it next year. So um my recommendation is to deny that property that they had submitted because of insufficient paperwork, basically. The last three, uh, the first two for the Valley Bible Church, they pretty much did the same thing that Crossroads of the West did. They had two properties, they consolidated them uh and had them rerecorded to um a new parcel number, which is the one in green. So um we're doing away with the first two and the the last one is the 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 new and approved number.
Gotcha.
So that's the Reader's Digest version.
This is just backup, this other page you gave us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know where you had it over the weekend, I'm assuming. I had to look at it, I didn't know if you had any questions on on any of it, so that's why I wanted to give you the paper one.
All right, thank you. Uh, call for a motion.
All right, so do we easily just read through this whole thing, John, for the record, or is?
You could say, um, as explained.
We could, okay, all right. That sounds good to me. Um, well, I'll move to um to make the appropriate uh um denials or or tax-exempt uh exemptions um on this charitable, educational, and religious changes uh for two thousand twenty-one, as explained by Christine Louder. Is that, is that sufficient for motion? Is that good, do you think?
I think, all right. I I will second that. And uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I guess I.
All right, then we'll move on to uh agenda item number nine. Approve the veterans' property tax abatements, which have been received and processed since December seventh, twenty twenty. Thank you.
Okay, um, these, uh, this spreadsheet is for applications that were received between December first and March fifth. Um, they are all from veterans except for the one at the top uh from a Mr. Herring, uh, which was a circuit breaker. Normally, we do not do those after uh the last day of November, which is the day, last day you can pay taxes. So November thirtieth, or not be late. Um, the reason that we did that one is, um, you may remember that in um October, let's see. Okay, I have to back up. In September, we had a break-in at the post office of some of the boxes, and one of them was ours. And um when Mr. Herring received his tax bill, it didn't show the abatement on there. And so he called and said, why didn't I get it? I said, well, I didn't get an application. So uh he sent me uh by email another application because he had copied it all. He just scanned and sent it to me. And then, uh, cause I told him, I says, well, I don't know, but send it and I'll look at it. And then after receiving it, looking at it, I realized that he would have mailed it just prior to our box being broken into. And so after talking with Dan, we just went with it being lost. Um, and so we went ahead and applied the abatement uh as he would have received it. So that's why there's that one little weird circuit breaker um on there. Uh, the other ones are um uh either an outright new application or there's three there that's under adjustments and one for tax year twenty twenty. Um, that uh were where the veteran received an increase in their percentage. Um, and when that happens, if they contact me um or our office, we can do an adjustment to their taxes as though um they had that in place at that time. It has to be far enough back that it still would have um been effective. In fact, I I received one just last week and it was effective December, in December, but since taxes had already come due, we couldn't apply it. So, but if it had been, you know, July or anything like that, we could have certainly done it for him. But anyway, so uh my recommendation is that we approve these um exemptions. There was a total of sixteen thousand eight thirty-eight seventy-four uh in adjustments during that time period.
Okay, call for motion.
All right. I will move to approve the veterans' property tax abatements, uh, which we've had had been explained to by Christine Louder. This is for the, this is for late applications and adjustments between December first, two thousand twenty, and March fifth, two thousand twenty-one. And they are all veterans, other than the top um one, which is Mr. Herring, which was a circuit brayer, breaker, I'm sorry, circuit breaker. And uh that was due to a a lost application due to a break-in of of our post office box here in Parowan. The total of these abatements is sixteen thousand eight thirty-eight and seventy-four cents.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You betcha.
Thank you.
All right, after taking care of that, we will now reconvene as the Iron County Commission. Uh, item number ten, John is gonna speak too, and he had to step out and grab a document. Wait for him, this is a, item number ten is a, it's a request uh for a possible forgiveness of taxes. Um, initially came, the request came to me. Uh, I referred it to John, we both spoke into the parties and gone back and forth to figure out the easiest way to work this, and so John, John will explain.
So normally, we would ask people to go through the deferral process. Um, I was approached by this individual's um counselor. Uh, they are permanently. Uh, they are, uh, permanently disabled and they're applying for that disability. They should apply, or, I'm gonna take this off. Um, they should be eligible, uh, for the special abatement starting this year. However, uh, they're up to lose their house, and, um, we're talking about a total amount owing of, uh, thirty-nine hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. That does include penalties and interest, I didn't get a chance to peel that out, um.
Much as the taxes only?
Yeah, have you got it handy?
Uh, taxes only are three thousand, three ninety-nine, seventy-nine.
Thank you.
Interest is-
Three thousand, thirty-three, ninety-nine?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine?
I'll get it for a second.
Do you, would you, would you mind speaking into the microphone? Sorry, I always get complaints and-
Well, and just-
I have to be that guy.
Just because, of course, Melanie's been trying to work on these with tax sale, and we were kind of left out of the loop on this, so if you could just reach out and let us know when these come up, we'd really appreciate it. Um, the taxes are three thousand, three ninety-nine, seventy-nine. Interest is four sixty-three, sixty-three, and penalty eighty-one dollars and eighty-four cents.
Eighty-one?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four in penalties?
So that gives you a total of the thirty-nine, forty-five, twenty-six.
Seventy, thirty-three, ninety-nine, seventy?
Nine.
Nine?
That's the, yeah, so that's the total, that's the ta, that's the tax only.
So, five forty-five, forty-seven in penalty and interest, is my math correct?
Is that correct, Nicole? I didn't get a chance to-
I didn't ask, I'm just-
I didn't either.
My report lists them all separate, but I can do it really quick.
So typically, if, if you were to take this action, um, historically, the com- commission has not forgiven penalties and interest. Um, and so, uh, this individual-
I'm gonna just tell you that if you forgive the taxes, when I go in and take the taxes off, the penalty and interest goes away, because without that tax there, there's nothing to gain interest and penalty.
Okay.
So, just so you know.
So, so if the commission were to approve the, uh, thirty-three, ninety-nine, seventy-nine, which is the amount owing minus penalties and interest, the penalties and interest go away?
They do.
Okay.
You forgive tax, it forgives everything.
So am I just remembering that wrong? It seemed like anytime this kind of discussion ever happened.
We, we leave a certain amount of the tax there to add up to that.
Do, what's your recollection? Am I just remembering it wrong?
We, we typically don't do this very often.
Right.
I only remember like one of them.
Yeah, no, it's gotta be a really, yeah.
Yeah, no, this is, this only come around every once in a great while.
Like an abatement amount that they would have received, so that's not taking the full tax amount.
Right.
Hey, it's reducing that, which reduces the penalty and interest.
Yeah, right. And of course, uh, you're certainly, you know, in a position to do whatever you feel is best. This individual-
This is an individual that is, that is disabled?
Yeah, permanently mentally disabled, and also physically, and won't, according to the, the counselor that I spoke with and who, uh, sent me the release, wouldn't be able to work again. Um, and will qualify for the special abatement, uh, beginning with this year.
So do they have someone that's gonna help them in paying their bills and keeping it?
Yeah, that's what this individual, yeah, right, mhm. Yep.
Uh, so- And in my conversations, I've, I've spoken with the, with the therapist counselor several times, back and forth, and they indicated that there's just no way that, that this person would be able to, to make up that tax debt, and the house is on the list for the tax sale.
Uh, and I normally wouldn't recommend this course of action, except for these kind of very special circumstances, yeah.
Right.
Been late, Mike. Were, were you able to get some set up for the abatements with Christine moving forward?
Uh, I'm not sure. Um, I referred them, I referred them back here. Um, I know John spoke with them. I don't know, I don't-
You're talking about this case specifically? Would you come up to the microphone? I'm sorry, I would-
Right.
So, I mean, part of what you do is your garbage and landfill.
Oh, that's, yeah, we need to-
What do you do with that going forward also?
Yeah, that one, that one doesn't go away.
Because like two hundred and thirteen dollars in two thousand twenty was garbage.
Mm-hmm.
Two thousand eighteen and nineteen, so.
Yeah, it, it's a fair point, but that's just like other utility bills, you know, they're gonna have to continue to pay water.
Well, and, and-
But then you're gonna have to not be attaching them onto taxes.
So they, these are, this does reflect some of those bills, this total?
Yeah.
Well, and that's what I was saying, so, moving forward, and this probably should factor into your decision now, if you have a stopgap with an abatement that keeps us from getting into this same problem with taxes, um, then you may be more inclined to fix the problem we're in now, just knowing it's not gonna come, cause if it's just gonna come back again, you'd almost rather let things take their course. Um, if it's just gonna be a problem over and over and over and over and over again. But if, if we can get her into an abatement program because she qualifies, and, and this is a way to fix some of the past stuff, and now we at least have a, a workable solution moving forward, that's all I was getting at, and-
So, so this is an unusual circumstance because they didn't file for an abatement?
She, they never, Christine just came in. I think this is kind of a new situation with her disabled disability and all of this stuff. I don't think she has filed or asked in the past.
No, um, Mr. Blake called me Friday, last week.
Yeah, a, a week ago-ish.
Something. Uh, anyway, yeah, it was earlier in the week, uh, and we talked about it. And then when I realized that it was on this tax sale, I told him, I says, "You, you need to get it abated if you can." Uh, or deferred, excuse me, deferred.
Right.
And that's when I referred you to John.
Right.
Um, so that it could get on the, uh, agenda for this meeting, because be- between now and the next meeting, there's gonna be charges added to the account.
Right.
Um, so-
It's about three hundred and fifty dollars tax sale fee, cause we have to do all the research and all-
The title search and all that.
Title search, this is when it really starts to ramp up on the tax sale, so.
So when I saw it on the agenda, I assumed, cause I couldn't remember the name, I assumed it was the one you spoke about, and nobody's contacted me, so.
Okay, and I don't, yeah, I, it was like a hot potato.
I don't think we've been that far down the road, because the, the first question is, well, what do we do about the deferral packet? And, and, you know, the answer was, well, there is no, there will be no finances to, to pay for the-
She has a mortgage on it, hopefully?
That would be normally part of the deferral packet, and, um, and that's, but, but because there was gonna be no ability to repay a deferral, um, that was why I suggested maybe this other course of action be taken. And yeah, the, the, the garbage and the mortgage and the, uh, everything else, we, we, that's not within, you know, Iron County's control, uh, but-
I mean, if this continue, I'm, and I think we ought to show mercy, obviously, but, but if this continues to come up, maybe there needs to be some circumstances where that home's sold and, and they're, they're moved in, you know, maybe have a smaller place, or, or some, a, a good guardian to, to help them with their bills?
And all those other things are true, but if we do nothing, then the circumstances that the house is sold to tax sale in, in May, I mean, I-
Right, right, right.
Not to be-
For now, but, but moving forward, is somebody-
And back to my thing, wh- if there is a, a workable plan moving forward, then maybe you consider forgiving.
Yes.
But if there isn't a workable plan moving forward, then you're really doing nothing other than kicking-
With what? That's my point. Do, do we need to be-
Taxes?
Do we need to be involved with the individual's, you know, power bill? I mean, I'm not, I, I'm, I'm not trying to be flippant, I'm just saying, you know, how, how deep down that rabbit hole should we go?
Will the special abatement cover the full tax debt? What are you going to do with the garbage bill going forward?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause there's-
It needs to be paid.
There's eight hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-three cents of garbage bill on this, four years' worth.
Um, is the, is the, Christine, I, I, I'm not able to speak to it. Um, could you speak to how the special abatement might work? I know, is it unique for each situation?
Well, the, the special abatement is for individuals that are sixty-six or younger by the end of the year, um, and are under extreme hardship, or it would, uh, be difficult for them to pay the property taxes. Once an individual reaches the age of sixty-six, or will by the end of the, the tax year, or is a widow or widower, then they qualify for, for what's called the circuit breaker. And that will pay up to a hundred percent of the tax on the house and the first acre of land. The special abatement will only help with fifty percent of the tax on the house and the first acre of land. So sixty-six, the, is the magical age. Um, you know, I, I don't know, if she's a widow, then she would qualify as long as the income, you know, parameters are there. Um, and it sounds like they are, uh, then she could apply for the circuit breaker. Uh, but if, if she's not a widow, then it would just be the special abatement.
I believe.
Younger than sixty-six?
Yeah, and, and I'm trying not to-
Yeah.
Give too much personal information, but I think, like thirties.
Oh.
It's not, yeah, it was, it's been a pretty catastrophic view.
Disability, is that accurate?
Um, only that they can qualify for the special abatement, if, yeah.
But the special abatement is limited to fifty percent of the home and the first acre, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, so there's still gonna be a significant amount. So to Dan and Nicole's point, I mean, barring the three hundred and fifty dollar fee that will be accrued on March fifteenth, between, before the next meeting, uh, you know, it certainly would be appropriate to, and, and we could also do it if, if you were to choose to forgive, but to, to maybe sit down with, um, this, um, counselor and helper that Mike and I have been in contact, Mr. Blake and I have been in contact with, and, and make a plan, um.
Does this need to be decided today? Could it be tabled until next meeting?
The only, yeah, the only problem with tabling is that, that three hundred and fifty dollar fee gets also applied, but that's-
Could we, could we not, could we, can we choose to wait and not do that, so we don't incur that cost, knowing we're gonna do something, but we wanna get more details?
No, I think that will automatically go on, but you could have down the road-
You could waive it down the road, with, with, just like some of these, these other-
Because like, the, the Water District, the Water Conservancy District is, um, you know, there's four years' worth of bills there, or four, well, whatever. It's ninety-two dollars and fifty-six, or fifty-five cents. Are they, are they made whole, or they write this off? Those, like the, the landfill Bruce and the County Water Conservancy District?
Um-
I assume that's what that is, so WCD, is that?
When, yeah, it is. When, uh, when those taxes are paid, they're distributed, aren't they, Nicole?
But if we, if we forgive this, are those, do they just write these off, or do we, does the county have to make them whole, and we?
Uh, no, they just get written off.
Yeah.
By those entities, okay.
The only, the only money that goes back to utilities is our utilities, which would be garbage and sewer. When the, when the, and that's when the property is sold.
So what is-
Or the taxes are paid.
And I guess maybe this is my ignorance, but what is Special Assessment ten? Is that?
Special assessment is you, a landfill garbage, uh-
So that was the bottom, there's a, there's a middle one that says, Special Assessment ten, uh, County WCD?
Is that Water Conservancy District?
You may have a Water Conservancy District lien.
Yeah, is that the water, their water? But that would be, it would be more than those amounts for their water bill for those years.
Oh, that could be a lien, and, and this is what-
It's an amount, uh, it's, it looks like, there's, there's no new charges on any of those years, and it's, it's, it's interest on an amount that was owing.
But still, the, the, any lien holders-
But that's, yeah.
Lose out if this thing goes to tax sale and it's sold.
And, and technically, anytime you forgive any of the entities for whom Iron County collects, just loses that revenue.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, I'd be in favor of helping this individual, but I think it would be nice to, before we do, maybe table it and put it on the next agenda and do some research before we do that, so it's-
Sure.
So it does, this doesn't get forgot about, and we end up with this again next year, right? Does that make sense?
We need to let them know, okay, your abatement would cover fifty percent, but she's still gonna have three or four hundred dollars in taxes.
Right.
Neither needs to pay her garbage bill monthly, or it's gonna get attached on merit.
Right.
Be in the same situation in five years.
Uh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Who, who would do that? Who would sit down with this individual and-
Well, I, I have contact with the, with the counselor who's been reaching out to us. Um, we can have that conversation with her to-
Counselor would like to come in and we could all sit down and then-
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the best course of action.
And then we have a plan, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's all out in the open before we waive it, and it just comes up again, we know where we're at.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Right, and it's a, it's a fair question to ask, you know, is there a plan for other expenses, so?
No, if there is any, uh, garbage, like, monthly bill, or-
Yeah. Well, Dan?
Also, in my, in my report this morning, I was talking about Senate Bill twenty-six, which tweaks the abatements, and it, that may be that, that, under the new bill next year, actually, it'll expand some things, so. I don't think it'll fix this problem, but it may go from fifty percent to seventy-five. I can't remember, I need to look at all the details. It's been a while since I was on a committee last year where we talked about it, but-
Yeah, and to your point, and the, the, the fights that Dan has been, the, the campaign Dan has been waging on everyone's behalf in the legislature regarding, instead of deferring everything, having, having more generous abatements is probably a better solution.
Yeah, so I, I would just say we table this, and then I will reach out to the, the party and, uh, have them make an appointment with you guys, with the, with the key players of the, the Treasurer's Office, uh, the Auditor's Office, and, and work through those details to see what's, what's the most fair for both parties and what's, what's doable, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, um, and then we just need to strike number eleven. So that brings us to Personnel Issues.
Hello?
Good afternoon.
Great. In the IT Department, Justin McDonald was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill as the full-time web developer technician, effective date three eight of two thousand twenty-one. And I don't know if you wanna go through each one?
Uh, let's just, let's do them, let's just do an individual motion for each one.
All right, I'll move to approve the new hire of Justin McDonald as a full-time web developer slash IT technician, effective date March eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the landfill, Keith Emery was selected from the most competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill as the landfill technician, full-time, effective date March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, I'll move to approve, uh, new hire Keith Emery as a full-time landfill technician. This is a backfill of a vacant position, and this'll be effective date March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the Sheriff's Office on the patrol side, Marshawn Swinney was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill as a deputy one pending his background approval, um, effective date April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Um, on that, uh, was, you said Marshawn? Is that, is that spelled correctly, Emery?
That is spelled correctly.
Okay, okay.
And how do you pronounce the last name?
Um, Swinney.
Swinney, okay. Right, I'll move to approve the new hire Martian, Marshun Swinney as a full-time deputy one. Backfill, this is backfill of a vacant position, and it'll take effect, uh, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, when the pandemic first came into the forefront earlier last year, uh, the county approved a temporary pandemic leave policy in order to allow for a bit of leniency, um, on the donation portion of the sick leave policy. Um, this past weekend, um, the Senate passed the American Rescue Plan Act, um, with, um, a relief package that includes direct tax, um, credits for all counties within the US. This bill also extends the Family First Coronavirus Response Act until September. Um, since the FF-CRA took over kind of what the county policy had envisioned, um, back in April, it looks like, um, since the FF-CRA is gonna continue till September, our temporary pandemic leave policy can be closed.
Great.
That's all I've got.
Okay, I'll make a motion to officially suspend the temporary pandemic leave policy. All right.
Yep.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Prairie Dog Matters or Boards, non-delegated items. Seeing none, declare this county commission adjourned.
That's what I was wondering, since, since Marilyn's not here, do we want to?
No, well, they'll.